Quite a while.
Bob forgot.
Are we unmuted?
And Allison.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Good evening. This is the Town of Camden Select Board meeting for February 1st, 2022. As is our custom, this meeting is both live as well as on Zoom. The Zoom address can be found on the Town of Camden website under Select Board and look at the Agenda or Packet. And on the Agenda, there is the link for this Zoom meeting. For those attending on Zoom, please know you'll be brought in as an attendee. If you want to have a question or like to make a comment, please use the Q and A function, identify yourself, and please, your residency, because that's a requirement of our operations. Please refrain from using the chat function, because it can be disruptive. Again, if you want to say anything or make a comment, please, Q and A can be written, or you can come on live. We'll bring you on as a panelist if you'd like to speak to us. Thank you very much. And with that, I'd like to start the meeting with a request of the Board to add two items to the Select Board Agenda. One is for an executive session under MRSA 405-6-A Personnel Matter. And the second is, regrettably, to have an action to accept the resignation of Matt Siegel. Mark, would you mind giving us, if you don't mind?
So moved. I'm not going to repeat all those numbers.
Have a second.
I second.
Any discussion? All's in favor? With that, obviously, the executive session will be added at the end of the meeting. But right up front, we'd like to address the action we just added, which was the, regrettably, again, to accept the resignation of Matt Siegel. And in that regard, we are in receipt of a letter from Matt, and I want to read it into the record this evening. The letter is addressed to myself, Robert Falciani, Chair of the Camden Select Board, as well as William Kelly, the Town Attorney. The letter is as follows: Dear Mr. Falciani, With this certified letter, I submit my resignation from the Camden Maine Select Board effective immediately. I've enclosed my key to the Town Office building. I have been paid a stipend for one year, 12 months of service to the Town. I fulfilled eight months of that service. Please have the Town send me an invoice for the amount that they would like to be reimbursed. Best regards, Matt Siegel. Basically, we're in a functionary mode of accepting this resignation letter. So if I could have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion that we accept Matt Siegel's resignation letter, regrettably.
Second.
Motion, second discussion. Not hearing none. All those in favor? But to Matt, we should, we all know the amount of service he's provided the Town from days of planning board, his days on the Select Board, and also in a prior role for the Town of Camden Select Board as the Director of the Camden's nominated Director, which, regrettably, he had to leave last, attend to last year. He did a phenomenal amount of work for the broadband initiative that we created with Midcoast Internet Development Corporation. And it was a Herculean effort. Not he, but the other Directors also up until that time when I said he had to depart that position on December 31st. So with that, that regrettable activity, I'm going to revert to our Select Board Agenda as published, the first item of which is the, any public input on non-agenda items. Ms. Anita.
This stays on? Can you hear me over? It's my call.
You can take it off if you feel more comfortable.
If you prefer, take it off, and you can stand back a little further. You stay right there. It's up to you.
Okay, good.
But either way, put the microphone as close to you as possible.
Take the microphone with you. You have to. And please introduce yourself.
My name is Anita Berisius Scott, Camden resident. And the reason I'm coming before you this evening is to bring up the topic of brown-tailed moth control. And as hopefully you all know, I've been actively pursuing for the last two years an alternative non-toxic option for removal of brown-tailed moth nests that residents and the Town, for important locations, can pursue. And that is by using a drone-mounted system of clipping and retrieving nests. It's not something that is effective for a large area, but there are individuals in town, especially out at the Snow Bowl, where this is a serious problem for them personally. And the Snow Bowl itself has a great number of these nests around the parking lot, in the public areas where the trails are, and so on. The reason I bring it up is, as you know, repeated infection by the brown-tailed moth can not only defoliate trees, important trees, but can kill them. If that defoliation happens three years in a row, it can kill the trees. This has happened a lot, quite a bit in Harpswell. And we have some very precious town trees, particularly in the cemetery and other places that we want to protect. The most viable option for control previously has been to inject the trunk of the tree and have the toxin go up into the leaves. The caterpillars feed on that and are killed. Of course, it's not specific to the brown-tailed moth. The toxin will kill anything that feeds on the leaves. And there is a very limited season or duration of time where this injection can take place and be effective. And unfortunately, within that season of time, unless somebody is extremely accurate about timing, is also the time when the blooms come out on the tree and the nectar and pollen that the pollinators and nectar feeders are eating also can take up and be killed. So that toxin, while probably the cheapest method, only costing a couple hundred dollars per tree, is not ideal. And an alternative is, of course, using a crane-mounted, bucket-mounted arborist going up and trimming individually. So the drone-mounted technique, which was developed by Deleuze Company in Quebec, Canada, at Sherbrooke University, it was developed by engineers, electrical and mechanical engineers at Sherbrooke University, is probably not any more time-consuming than a crane-mounted, but certainly it can get to more trees and in areas where there are water bodies nearby where you wouldn't want to put toxins and so on. I'm appealing to the Town to consider, as a Town, to help in this matter. I think there will be plenty of private landowners who have these concerns, who want to protect their precious trees. We have trees we want to protect. We don't know what the future of this infestation will be, but we don't want to lose our precious old oak trees. I think a regional approach is appropriate. As it is, as a result of advocacy here in Midcoast Maine, we have now one arborist who lives in Litchfield, Eben Mann, who has, who attended the December 15th local Midcoast Maine field trial, where the Canadians brought their equipment to Midcoast Maine, and decided to take up this technology for his services as an arborist. So he is offering the services. Litchfield is not exactly next door to Midcoast Maine. However, he, as far as I know, is the only Maine arborist who has done this. I want to mention who has taken on this technology. I want to mention that he had no prior experience with drone flying. He simply signed up for lessons, and he bought the drone, and he bought the equipment, and he's ready to go as of now. So this is something that's possible. Relative to other possible means of control, it's relatively inexpensive. It certainly lends itself to a regional approach. If you get together with other towns, perhaps, it's something that can be done throughout the winter. All the person needs is the ability to fly the drone, which is a result of the lessons, the commercial pilot's license. But the drone that they use can be used in, all the way to minus four degrees Fahrenheit.
Can you give us the information on this person and send it to us? I'd appreciate it, because we were aware of a lot of discussions about the drone technology. And I'd like to see what that information is, but we're obviously not going to do anything about it right now. But we'll take a look at that information.
I have been sending you information, but it's sort of been scattershot as to whom I'm addressing it to and who's the most updated. So.
Get it to Audra. Get it to Audra, and we can take a look at it and try to consider it. But I have to, we have to move on now.
I appreciate that. But I would like the Town to consider this non-toxic option. I'm all for preserving our trees and our environment as well.
Thank you. One second. Thank you for coming before Allison's question. Thank you for coming. Good to see you again. Go ahead, Allison. Do you have a question?
Yeah, a question, I think, and a comment. I've loved following this. I just think we should also be clear that, like, the magnitude of the problem and in terms of, like, the approach that the Town really can take on or not take on, that it would be great if there's a viable option to be able to hire somebody to address the town trees that we know need to be addressed in, you know, a non-toxic way rather than a toxic way. But when we start talking about getting involved in helping residents deal with their trees, I just think that's going to, could very quickly turn into, it's just so much bigger. We have lots of trees that the Town is responsible for, and I would very much support a policy that would, you know, be a non-toxic approach. But in terms of just, like, helping everybody else in town have this, I don't know if we can get into that.
This is a major issue, and we're going to hit it again this year and probably the year after again. It just seems relentless. But we need to take a look at all options. And as a private person who has the problem, I have to look at my private options too, who I can hire. That's why I'd be interested in seeing what this is. But again, we have to move on, Anita. So thank you so much, and we won't forget.
Wanted to bring the topic up again for your consideration.
Good timing. We're only a few months away.
Well, anytime in the winter is good timing.
I know.
Right.
That's true, Anita. Thanks so much. Do you have any other input from a non-agenda item, Ray?
My name is Ray Williamson. I'm a Camden resident and business owner. I've been before this Board. This is the third time that I've come to speak on a matter concerning my business. In October, it was decided by the Board based on information that I feel was inaccurate and misleading, that my permit to operate my vessel to Sally was terminated. The day in question, when you guys made that decision, you heard from Steve Pixley, who told you, as he told me.
Ray, I want to stop for just a second, please. We have discussed this through a lengthy memo in the previous meeting during a non-agenda item. You're covering the same information over again. I told you at that meeting, we are going to cover this issue. We're going to get back to you. We just haven't done it yet. So I apologize for that, but.
And Ray, I answered you also on Monday. I sent you an email saying, basically.
There was nothing that could be done.
That's not true.
Well.
No?
The email said, the email says, we cannot address something that is, you know, that happened in October. I came to the Board on the meeting directly after that decision was made, voted before the Board, and nothing happened. I called you, Bob. I said, what happened? You said, well, you didn't put it in writing. So I put it in writing, and I gave that to you, and nothing happened. Then I was talking to Matt, because you suggested that I follow up with the other Select Board members, which I did. And I got various recommendations on how to proceed. And I was told, come again to the meeting, and this time, bring a written statement, which I did all that. And then, and then I just heard a couple of days ago that, or maybe it was yesterday, that it was not going to be on the agenda.
It was not going to be on the agenda tonight. No, it's not on the agenda tonight. But that's why we're not going to discuss it tonight. It's still in consideration and discussion. That's what I said to you last time before you left. I said, just give us some time to look at some various elements. We'll see, and we'll be in touch with you about, well, one of two ways, be on the agenda or not be on the agenda. And that has not been decided yet. So.
Well, it was my understanding that it had been decided, and that's why I'm here. But if we're still, if that's still an option, then great. I'm waiting here. I've been waiting for three months.
We don't, I understand the duration. We don't slam the door on things. We try to be cautious and go through the, you know, whatever, the looks and thoughts we want to go through. And, you know, it wasn't put on the agenda tonight because it just wasn't time. That's all. And again, we've discussed this over and over and over, and I know your frustration, but we will, you know, one way or the other, get back to you on it.
Well, that's all I wanted to hear.
Okay. But did you want to say something, Allison?
I do, because I just sympathize so much with that feeling of, like, being told it's going to come up, and we're going to work on it. And then it does feel like there are multiple conversations maybe taking place. And I'm personally feeling a little frustrated with it. I will say, like, just that it's very true that it's still being talked about. I talked about it with Steve Pixley for a while today, just trying to understand the, it's not that it's being ignored. I think all of us are, like, struggling with this and the catch-22 that we may have put ourselves in by not acting. Some of the things in the harbor ordinance that say what times of years we're supposed to, what time of the year we're supposed to do certain things, and not wanting to violate that. I feel somewhat personally responsible because of being the, Bob wasn't there that night.
There's no excuse for me. I'm not making excuses.
Anyway, I don't think it's being, you can rest assured that it's something that's on lots of minds.
It's on the burners.
But it's, the harbor is a really frustrating thing, because, you know, we hear these kinds of things from you, but then there's, like, these other groups that are just always kind of squabbling, like, this person's not following this, and this person's not following this. And there's a little bit of, like, not a very nice feeling of, like, everybody trying to point out what everybody else is doing wrong. And so trying to navigate that, I think we are trying to navigate that and not put ourselves in a position where we're not following our own rules and then making ourselves susceptible to, you know, some kind of lawsuit. So I do think it should come up on the agenda very soon so that we can avoid, you know, at some point, we may exhaust the ability to come up with some idea on the side. And that it should be on the agenda soon so that we can at least all have, you know, the same conversation. And.
The Town being former governor doesn't go at the speed of light. Sorry, you already know that. But like I said, we're going to get back to you one way or the other. We promised that. That will happen. And so just, I'm, just be a little bit more patient, Ray. I beg of you, please.
Okay.
Also, maybe be something where we're all kind of having the same conversation.
I can say, I talked to Bob about it yesterday. If you notice, at the last meeting, I asked for it to be on the agenda, and we haven't gotten there yet. I talked to Bob yesterday, and he said that we will deal with it. And so I have to take him at his word that we will, we will deal with this. Because I don't want to comment on it now, but.
It's not, it's not under the table. It's on the table. So just be patient, Ray. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Good to see you again.
Yeah.
Do we have anybody else wants to make any comment on a non-agenda item? Okay, not seeing anyone. We'll move on to Item Two, which is the approval of the Board Mass for January 18th, 2022. Do we have any comments on the meeting minutes for that date?
I do. It's, I think there are a couple of places where it's a little confusing, I think, some of the comments. But I guess it's, you know, it's the comments that you can watch the meeting to make sure, do it. The one place, in the Town Manager's Report, it's a little confusing about the tannery work. So it says, you know, cleanup status, you know, the grant was originally prepared, 40K match, 155K now. It's, sometimes I wish it weren't so cut and dry, and it was a little fleshed out a little bit more about specific, because it's sort of shorthand. So a little confusing. The one thing I did want to say is, accepted toboggan run at Snow Bowl against Rockport, it's, it is the race between the two Select Boards. It is a race.
Camden, Rockport.
Yes, Camden versus Rockport. So I just wanted to flesh that out a little bit about what exactly we're doing. And it usually happens around noon, beginning of the Saturday, at the beginning of the second runs.
Right.
So if a whole lot of people from Camden would like to come out and cheer us on, watch us, watch us, watch us spend those 10 seconds of sheer terror, you know, please, please do.
Yeah.
Other than that, I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes from January 18th, 2022.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion made, second discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, 4-0. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, gang. And next, we go on to Item Three, which is the approval of two items, the Vittler lodging licenses for the Hartstone Inn at 41 Elm and Vittler only for 40 Paper and at 40 Washington Street.
I have a question. Last week, we, the last meeting, we tabled the Hartstone Inn motion because it was a part of a bunch of other licenses.
That is correct.
And this is just for the Hartstone Inn. So I'm curious, what's.
What part of the Hartstone Inn are we approving?
It's not the Free Street or the Hideaway. It's just the.
So tonight, we're just doing this, and then at some future point, we'll deal with those?
Well, possibly. There's some things they need to sort out.
Okay. Then I'll make a motion that we approve the Vittler, whatever, however you pronounce that word, and lodging license for Hartstone Inn at 41 Elm Street.
A second?
Discussion. All's in favor, 4-0. And to 40 Paper?
I'll make a motion that we approve the application for Vittler license at 40 Paper at 40 Washington Street.
Just to be clear, isn't the Hartstone, Vittler, and lodging?
That's what I said.
That's what he said.
I missed it, Mark. Thank you so much. All right. Let's, now, on to the second discussion. All's in favor, 4-0. Thank you. Item Five, which are action items, the first action item we have is our, actually, kind of an annual event, or your approval of the, I love this term, fee order, for the Snow Bowl, Cozen Planning and Opera House. Audra, do you want to lead us into one at a time? Which one do you want to take first?
Sure. Since it looks like in your packet, you have the Snow Bowl first.
Yep. Okay.
We can talk about that.
Let me pop that up.
On the screen?
Yeah.
Really, the.
Do you want me to share my screen?
It's up to you. Sorry.
Or do you want it up on the screen?
I was going to do that if it was easy.
No, I can put it on the, sure, I can put it, I can share my screen onto.
Okay.
Here.
Why not? Why not?
Oh, let's just.
So there are really no changes proposed from?
From last year?
Yeah. Or this year that we're currently in?
I see.
Yep.
I see.
But there are some new fees, and I would like to discuss, discuss those.
Okay.
So which one are the new fees?
Well, the first thing I'd like to discuss, last year, after the fact, I realized I was unhappy about how much we were charging for the softball diamond at the park. We, for years, it had been no charge at all for people to use our parks, which is how I grew up. And it was, we thought about, maybe we could raise some funds. And I think $300 is a pretty high number. I'd like to see that.
How much is, which one are you looking at?
Field, it's the first one, 901-504 Parks and Rec revenue. Field use reservation fee for adults. I'd like to see it move back to, for, field use for $100 for the leagues. They're all the same.
As for youth, it says, are you proposing the adult one to be 100?
Yes. Because I think 300, because we received some feedback last year when we first put it in. One of the teams that was using, one of the leagues that was using the thing bailed on our, went somewhere else because they thought it was excessive. And I thought about it. I thought, you know, I never had to pay, you know, the fields in the summer or something that the Town provides for the pleasure of people. So that's how I feel.
I would say that's fine, but no alcohol use or smoking.
Yes. You know, good trash.
Well, one of the things, and I'll say, because I know we've talked about that, that, and you said that the money doesn't even cover the cost of taking care of the field. We know that. And one of the things you talked about, the trash, and I went and checked it out. I've been there a couple of times, because I usually play there with my son in the summer. And one of the problems is, is there was one trash can, and it was totally full, overflowing. And if we provided more trash cans, it wouldn't, trash wouldn't overflow. I think.
I still don't think that the alcohol use or smoking is addressed by that. But I'm happy to put more trash cans there.
More trash cans out.
I guess, but isn't the issue here, that, you know, as a kid, this is $100, and we're not talking, this is adults, when you, I remember we went through the whole gyration of counting how many dollars per, this, $300 is per league, right?
Right.
And if you take that number to the number of players, it's like five bucks a person.
I guess my protest is.
The second thing, I, come back at it. But the other thing was, last year was a terrible year to use as a, as a.
They were kind of spoiled for choice because of COVID. A lot of youth sports were canceled.
Exactly. I would, I would think that we haven't had a good, I know this is new, and I'm listening, but this is new. I think we should give it a little bit longer before we go juggling around based on some feedback on a miniscule fee per person.
But, Allison, I'll go next.
So, I mean, I just sort of wanted to remind everybody that this was part of a process that was really, quite a bit of thought was put into it. It was, the fee schedule for the fields was Mark Haskell's, like, passion point.
It was. It was.
And he stood, nothing to gain personally from it. It was from years of observation. It was reviewed by the Parks and Rec Committee and by the Budget Committee. The field is, you know, the ability to reserve that field so that nobody else can use it comes at a cost to all Camden residents who might wish to sometimes just go to the Snow Bowl and be able to run around in a field. But when you get the, and everybody sort of has that option to go there and do that for free and enjoy that, like, spontaneous, first-come, first-serv situation. But when you're all of a sudden able to reserve it and make it unavailable to everyone else, that is like a lost opportunity for anybody that just wants to go and use it. So I, just because one team decided that they had a better option somewhere else, that, to me, is not, this isn't like a big revenue generating opportunity for us at all. It's just figuring out how to use public spaces in a fair and equitable way. And that field being available, unreserved, a little bit more often, isn't a negative thing in my mind. So I, I think a lot of thought went into the way it, the way it is, and that if we lose a couple of teams, that's, I haven't, we got that one email last year that was, you know, providing some feedback. I just don't see that it's a major issue. Putting, checking the trash and all of that stuff, it's, that also, we have a hard enough time keeping the trash cans from overflowing downtown. I just can't, I don't support any changes there, like, at this time, without more information, considering the amount of review that went into it.
You, Sophie?
Yeah, no, I think, so the other way of doing this potentially is, instead of having a fee, it's a deposit fee. And if you clean up everything and there's no trash, then you get it back. So you have participation of people who use the field and don't leave trash behind them. But Audra is also saying that trash is not the only issue. It's smoking and drinking and.
Yeah, it's also wear and tear. Usually, you're trying to, you know, maintain a little
I mean, I'd say that's the difference between, like, a youth league versus an adult league, and why there's a difference in price.
And the reservation, so that I understand, it's for a single use, or it's for a season, the 300?
Season.
The season.
I have a question, how many, how many nights do they use it? Do they use it one night? Sorry.
Okay, okay.
I don't, I can't answer that question.
I remember, we went through, to Allison's point, a lot of discussion, we went down the calculation, and I remember being on the Parks and Rec Committee, they broke it down to per adult, per season, it's like five bucks.
And it's, and it's one night a week, so the rest of the week, people can show up and play?
Oh, sure, yeah, well, there may be, there may be other leagues, you know, I'm not sure how many leagues there are, I really don't know.
A lot of the, one point that was made a lot is that a lot of the people participating in the leagues aren't even Camden residents, and so.
True.
It's just, it's really not a large, it's a, it's, it's generally the best deal around.
I would say, I agree, I would agree.
Snowball's a really popular place, it's just we can't.
It is. I, I, I think I agree with Bob and Allison, that we need more data and. A little more time, and they can't use, I don't think we should use a COVID year as a, for any measure, Mark may well be right, but we'll know pretty quickly, I think, if he is not.
The one other thing, the other thing I have about, I'd be curious to know if it's just, if, if it's a one-night league or if it's two, how many nights they're using it, and I'm not sure about that.
I'm not either.
The other thing that I brought up a number of times is, we don't do the best job of taking care of that diamond, we don't, we don't clear the pathways very well, we don't do a very good job of taking care of that, that, that field. I've talked for a number of years about the, the condition of the backstops, the, the base paths are, you know, get full of weeds and are not taken care of, they cut the grass and that's about it, and we should do a better job, I have no problem charging more money if we do a better job of maintaining it, and we have not.
I see.
Okay.
That's, I think that's legitimate.
That's a good point.
That's legitimate. Another question I had to this, and it's a global one, this is for next year, correct?
Yes, 2023.
And next year, will we have the, the Tube Hill?
We have it, we have it now.
Is that, is there a charge for that?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's, it's there.
It's there.
And I have something to speak about before we get there.
All right, okay, Mark, go ahead.
Okay. The next one I'd like to talk about, all of a sudden, we're instituting charges for uphill season passes for the, using, skiing, where people use cross-country season, not using the lifts, and, you know, it's, I, I understand it, but I think what I'm seeing is a gentle slide, and maybe not so gentle, into charging for everything, the things that always used to be free, if I wanted to not use the lifts and climb, hike up the fee, yes, we make the snow and stuff like that, but there's something that, you know, these are public parks, and the fact that we're starting to charge for everything worries on me, it's not the way I grew up, and I think that people deserve to get something for their taxes, and we, I think it's okay that we invite people from other towns to do it as well, I'm not happy about those fees as well, because that's something we've never done, it just looks like, oh, we can make some more money here, we can make some more money here, and I just don't think we need to go down that path for every single thing that's done. Allison?
We talked about this extensively last year, and I want to say that we instituted some kind of a fee.
Oh, no, no, so, the, you reduced it drastically last year.
That's what I recall.
Drastically, sure, okay.
Yep.
So they proposed something high, there was something, there was extensive conversation, and, so we reduced it, and now what is this in comparison, this new fee?
The same reduced rate that you approved last year.
Right. I want to say that was, there could, because I, we didn't, we didn't like the higher fee, we, we said the same things, I think, that Marcus said, and I was very much on that side of things, if I remember, then Holly or Beth had some good points about keeping track of people, and then some of the skiers themselves got up and said they thought it was reasonable, and, so I would say it worked, the, since last year, I think, was sort of a negotiated solution, we should probably.
Now.
That the same.
Give it a little more time.
The one thing I'm.
We need more information.
One thing I'm curious about here, I see the season passes for that, but I don't see any day uses for, if somebody wants to go, am I missing that?
There is a season pass for 100, for Camden resident, 200 for non-resident.
Yeah.
And Marcus asked me a question about, is there a daily pass?
Is the uphill pass?
Yeah.
That was part of the discussion last year too, where maybe we didn't, maybe we objected to.
We did, but I don't remember where it was.
There was a.
We did, there was a reason why we didn't do a daily. There's, there's no daily pass in here.
Oh, yeah, that was one of those things, there was, there were more variables at play than we were immediately able to conceptualize on our own, and we needed help, kind of discussing it with Holly and Beth, that provided some context, right?
I think it had to do with the notification, because that's, that's sort of the biggest, the biggest thing that we have to manage with, it, it just can't be a free-for-all, I'm sorry, Mark, it can't, we need to know that people are up there for safety reasons, because they go when often we're grooming, and we need to make sure that they know which trails are shut down for grooming and which are open.
That's, but, that's, that's fine, you can, you can notify people that you don't need to charge them to notify them.
How are we going to know they're there if there's no other way of getting in touch?
There should be a very.
Nothing for the day.
I'm, I'm sorry, I understand, I think I'm outvoted in this, I just disagree.
Okay, that's all right, you're all right, Mark, I think, if, if we're going to be fair, I think to one or the other, if, we should have a daily fee and for a person who's skinning up the hill, if we're going to do a, often, well, why would you buy a season pass?
I think a lot of it is, they're not, they're not skinning at the times when it's open and you can go in and buy a ticket, too.
Good point.
There's, and this seems like we're getting into some speculation here, and.
Yep, I agree.
I can't remember all the details.
No, I remember, I remember the off-hours one, Allison, after 4 o'clock, there are people, we were told they're on the mountain, adding a few more runs, doing this, or just coming in the evening even.
I know, but nothing we're doing here is, is solving that problem, so it's not, it just doesn't, why don't we just delay that?
You can also go when, when the Snowball is not operating.
Yeah, you can go in.
Well, we can, we can.
Yeah, they have some really serious rules about that, and I feel like if we get into talking too much, we might say something that's not accurate.
Maybe we should just take that piece and hold that piece and improve everything else.
Yeah, sure, you can do that.
Or we could keep on, I have a couple other comments in different areas, too.
Go ahead.
Could we, does it say somewhere here that Wednesdays are free to Camden residents?
You know, I was looking for that too, and I couldn't find it.
I don't know if we.
I feel like it on this, but.
I know.
I think it was on the website, that was the only place I've seen, it's not on the, on the fee list currently.
I'd just like to continue to kind of promote that.
Until we reverse it, it stays in play, we said it last year.
I know, but it's like, one of those things, like, if you know, you know, it's kind of like, you can get sand from the town garage, which, it's like you only, only people that know about it, that heard about it are fine, and it's been a long time since it's, it's not promoted anywhere, and I understand.
No, I, I remember the fears last year about, you know.
I think it was the year before last.
The year before last, correct, you're right.
We were gonna.
And the fears of a lot of people, and, but it didn't occur.
Right, we were going to destroy the revenue.
Really, really well.
Yep.
Having free Wednesdays.
We could put it on this schedule, there's no reason why we couldn't put it on here.
No, it's, yeah, I mean, it's fine, like, I, I, yeah.
So what about also the, Summer Rec seems to have taken a, what happened to the pay what you pay, choose your own fee schedule plan?
That's still, that still happens, but it's sort of like a baseline fee, and then when an application is sent out, there's that kind of like, this is the, that's the ceiling, but there's.
But every time when we publish things like this, it ends up being that, like, I just looked at this and was like, oh.
Well, no, when you fill out the application, you get to choose.
Look at, at this kind of stuff and don't, like, I've been hearing lately, gosh, Summer Rec is really expensive, and I was like, no, I don't think so, I think we did this thing where there are tiers.
I mean, it's unavoidable, I mean, I send my kid to Summer Rec, if you fill out an application and you're a Camden resident, you have no choice but to look at the.
Don't fill out, and many people will not fill out an application when they just look at a fee schedule like this, like a fee schedule that doesn't look like, I don't see that Wednesdays are free, I don't see that there are reduced fee options on this.
Need to know they have that option.
It's a communications thing, like, how does somebody know that once they fill out the, that upon filling out the application, there's another.
In the application itself, you have to say what you're going to pay for it.
But this is an accounting document, this is not a communication document.
That's correct, that's correct.
Well, but it's. No, this is an accounting document, it's, because we're.
Communications document.
Then it has.
That's a different one.
That should be.
I don't think it exists.
That, that should exist separately.
It should exist separately, but what we're approving are accounting lines right now.
Correct.
So, so I don't disagree with you, Allison, but I think it, it should, it, you cannot put it in the budget, it's not a budget line item, and we're looking at a budget, so I think it should go on, on the communication somewhere, I agree with you, but it, it's not, this is a, this is a, this is an internal select board slash town budget list of line items that we're approving, so you wouldn't find those freebies here, because it's not an account.
But what is, what is, if you're just looking at, it needs to at least be clear to us, to somebody, so what does a non-Champton resident pay for, like, what is Summer Rec camp, Camden resident, 450, Summer Rec camp one week, 125, so is, what is, is the other one a month?
It's not.
It's not clear in many ways.
Well, we don't, we don't worry about the non-Champton resident side of it, because that's all run through the Y, so that's not our side of it, we're just setting, honestly, this is sort of like a subsidy as well, because we're kind of deciding.
Right.
You know, this is the maximum that we're willing to charge Camden residents to go to Summer Rec.
I don't think it belongs in the, this Snowball fee schedule, it's a, can it be a separate thing, because it's a.
There's two ways to handle it, we can, you can asterisk these numbers and, and say, refer to the following document, and that can explain some of this, but the fee schedule should be the fee schedule, but it could be footnoted at 450 or 125.
What is, I don't even know what we're voting on, is that a month, is 450, is that for, is that the monthly fee or the monthly?
No, that's weekly.
And what is the, what, it says, Summer Rec camp one week, 125, what is that?
That's if you only, so, sorry, 450 is if you're, you're going for the month.
Right.
If you're just going to do one week of camp, that's it, you're not going to do anything else?
125, right, that's what I thought.
So 4, no, no, 4, okay, I'm confusing myself now.
450 for the season.
450 is for the six weeks, six weeks of camp.
Okay.
It's for six weeks of camp.
Nobody's going to know that by looking at.
That's what I'm saying, we, I think we can keep them on there, let's asterisk this and see, and see the, whatever, whatever you want to call the document that explains that, because we don't want to try to be explaining that on a, on a fee schedule.
Well, it's, it's confusing, because there's like what we do versus what the Y does, which is a little bit different, so camp can be anywhere from nine to more, it depends on how much staff time they have and what they have available, we pay, we subsidize up to six weeks of summer camp, and that's the 450 or below.
There's no problem with, next to the 450, putting a parent that says six weeks, and that's, that's no wrong with that at all.
You can do that.
But if there's more to Allison's point, if there's more to the explanation, that should say, see notes or see some document.
Snowball.
Yeah, Snowball policy or whatever you want to call it, because that, that'd be fine, but I think it is confusing not to say six weeks here.
Yeah.
As a minimum, and then, and if there's something to be explained, we explain it on another document, we should be very clear to people, and it could be attached to this.
It's also, the whole idea is that part of our job as select board members is to kind of generally know what people are being charged and to decide whether that's appropriate, and if, if it's, this, this document should at least be understandable to us, like, I don't know really what I'm voting on, I remember the conversations about the Y, but I don't remember everything, and, like, even like lodge rental, full facility rental, is that a per day?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah?
Yeah, that's a day. It should be per day.
Mm-hmm.
We should put the length.
Does it matter whether it's, then there's like lodge weekday rental, is the full facility rental, is that a, is that, doesn't that not matter whether it's the weekend or the?
Lodge grounds.
No, apparently not, the only thing that's broken out is weekend, the lodge only for non-for-profit, for weekends and weekdays.
Yeah. Okay.
That's the difference, but I, I think you're right, the full facility rental should be clear and safe, it's for a day.
Is there like a trend in any direction, or?
I don't think we get much use of it.
We can also call it, you know, daily lodge rental.
Yes.
And then all those, because all those tariffs are for days, whether you're in weekend.
Full facility daily rental.
Yeah, instead of lodge rental, just call it daily, so the unit is already in the title, like, we have daily lift tickets, it's very clear, daily lodge rental.
Mm-hmm. I think in general, this is a good one to have Beth here for, just to, it's a good, you know, just to get a reminder on how everything works and what the, because I just can't remember a lot of this.
Do we need this one done right now?
I mean, I, if, if you're very uncomfortable with it, that's.
I'm not, I think we could, I think we could footnote it in those, as we have listed here, and then bring it back for a revisit to make sure we're clear, rather than throw the whole baby out with the bathwater, but it does need to be clarified, and we've, I've listed them all in my notes here, that I think are logical comments.
But you're proposing some increases, right, in the town manager column?
No.
Well, the toboggan chute, so you're trying to increase.
The town manager has the.
Has the uphill season pass.
Uphill season passes has the.
The, the private rental for the toboggan chute, the tubing hill.
Oh, sorry, these are, this is sort of what Beth is proposing.
Guys, a question, they, they raised it $100 for the rental to the toboggan chute and put that in for the tubing hill, did they explain why they wanted to raise it that much? That's quite a hefty raise.
The private rental per hour, per hour.
Hour is like.
Is a hundred dollars more.
Yeah.
But renting the toboggan chute, does that come with somebody to operate it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, geez, that's, that's like a.
Well, that's, that's a gift.
Yeah, that's a gift.
And that's the, yeah, I mean, that's the thing, like, that means that.
Might need more, like.
You're, you're using it privately for your event, and no other member of the public who would pay to come and use it can do that when you're privately renting it, so that's why that's proposed.
Totally, I mean.
Or private rental, if you're going to private rent it for a party, whatever, 250 is right.
Yeah.
I'm more worried about having, the renters having insurance, so what's the liability there for the town?
Yeah.
Well, they have to sign.
All the liability.
Yeah.
The liability of having a toboggan chute.
Especially, that's, don't get me started, yeah, I, I would suggest we, we approve with these comments and, and then we can have Beth come back and give us, you know, another explanation later if we have any more questions, but we've been, we've been dealing with most of this for years now, and I do believe it is confusing in a few places and easy to clarify, I've noted these four that I've got so far.
Which four, do you want to clarify, which four you have?
I have, add in the Wednesday free, I have, that we were currently holding on the uphill I have, that we were currently holding on the uphill rates. We need to clarify the, the, the comments about the rec camp, it's applicable to six weeks. And if there's more to be explained, it needs to be asterisked and a reference, a document attached. And then the other one was the, the full facility, daily rate of $1,000.
No. I'm sorry, Bob. It was the, the daily, daily lodge rental?
Yeah.
Is not a title of the, that section.
That's what I meant.
And then you have the full facility, the lodge weekend rental, but it's a daily rate.
That's correct. I, I was inserting the word daily on the $1,000. Those are the ones I had for now.
Mm-hmm.
Well, the one other question, and Audra may have a point about the parks and revenue of the baseball field, you know? I think it's a lot. I do think that we should discuss cigarettes and, and alcohol, although that's a, alcohol's a big part of what they do.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know what the legalities are of allowing drinking there. So maybe that's something that should...
I mean, it's not a matter of that, it's, there is a different impact with having a group of adults using a field and what adults do there, and that's fine, than when you have a youth league. You just have more trash, you have more trash of a different sort, you have more litter.
If you're talking to the drinking thing, that adults do drink a beer while they're playing softball, if you were to restrict that, you won't need to worry about what you're charging them for...
Exactly, because they're not going to go to that field. So it's, and it's not for, it's not like, I think, a moral thing you want to get into, it's more of a practical logistical cleanup.
Yeah.
Consideration.
Yes. But again, back to the, this, this schedule, I think we should at least put this core of these questions on, and then we can take it back and, and take a look at, when Beth's available, but not, not can too far down the road, Allison.
So the, the tubing hill and that sort of flat rate across all user groups?
Mm-hmm. You mean the $10?
Yeah. I...
It used to be five when we had it previously.
It did. And I understand that...
And I think that the only reason, I think that it's, what's being charged this year is a lot lower, because you have to walk up on your own, but when we have the rope toe installed.
That'd be, yeah.
That's the difference.
Is the $10 for the whole day?
No, it's per hour.
An hour.
Okay, we should clarify that.
And it comes with a rental, but the idea of bringing, the, a big part of bringing the tubing hill back was to try to, to maintain affordable options at the Snow Bowl, because skiing is so unaffordable for so many people. And so if you think about having a family that just to do something for an hour, if you've got three kids, you're looking at $50.
As opposed to $25.
And, like, yeah, I, I mean, I know that there's an impact and that, I'm just incredibly grateful that they figured out how to bring that tubing hill back, because that was something that it seemed like was never going to happen.
Yep.
So I don't want to like micromanage it too much, but I also, I, that's an area where I'd really like to err on the side of being less expensive, if possible, and making up some more money with wherever else we're...
Whatever number you want to put in, fine. It needs to be clear that it's per hour, because it doesn't say that.
I, I, that's not the message that I wish to send.
Yeah, I don't think per hour, I don't think per hour, for tubing, and it, make it five, I mean, number one, can we also include, well, yeah, $5, whatever, I agree with you, Allison, let's make it cheap.
If it's a huge problem, then we'll talk about why it's a huge problem, but...
Well, the reason why we had $5 per hour, as I recall way back when, per hour, is because gave a chance for people to turn over the tubes, so other people got a chance to get on the tubing hill.
Do we have somebody who checks that?
I, I don't know.
Well, the reason it was five, what, you're saying that $5 was too...
No, I thought $5 was fine, but I did, they did limit it to $5 per hour, and people, I think they were on their honor system to turn the tube after an hour.
Yeah, I mean, because it does, it does, it is popular, and you need to move people along. Now they're, but before, you used to have to walk up. And, you know, that, honestly, I'd rather keep it walking and $5 an hour.
It's not, it's not a long walk.
But I know that they've got a plan, and that's all fine, but if we can keep it at $5 an hour and without...
I don't have any problems.
I can't imagine the financial impact, just all of that.
Well, I used to, I, I used to take my son there, because his birthday is January, in January, we used to, that's where he used to have his birthday parties, when he was six, seven, five, somewhere in there. And we would have four or five kids. So if it was two, three parents and, and four or five kids, at $10, you're talking $100 for a party. And, and, you know, a lot of people can't afford that. That was one of the few things you could do and take...
Are we suggesting $5 per hour here?
$5 for two hours.
For two hours? I mean, we can keep...
We're not, no, but we're, we're already outside of the covering the cost discussion. We're, we're...
It's not, it's not about that, it's about, I recall...
I don't know what the reasons are for the hour thing.
It was very, very, very popular, and I remember people waiting in line, when I went up there with my grandkids, to wait in line to wait for a tube to be available.
Okay.
That's all. If you, and people were on their honor, that after an hour, they brought the tube back and paid another $5 if you wanted to. It's, it's, otherwise, you know, if you had a daily rate, then somebody's going to take the tube and go have lunch.
No, it's, an hour's enough, trust me.
An hour's enough, okay, so $5 an hour?
Right.
I mean, you could probably pay for more if you, I don't know, if it's this popular, then we can start opening on Mondays and Tuesdays and...
You, you pay the extra $5.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, anything else? Anything else to change besides the $5?
A bunch of screaming and yelling six-year-olds, an hour is more than enough.
Mark's like, an hour's enough, that's me.
So, Audrey, the change that I have to be made, at least in this draft, we're adding Wednesdays, we're going to hold on the uphill rates for more explanation, $450 on the rec camp is six weeks. And if there are any qualifications on those rates that need to be asterisked, there should be a separate document to describe that. Adding the word daily to the facility rental for $1,000, and the tubing hill is to be changed to $5 per hour.
Can you rent cross-country skis at the Snow Bowl?
I don't believe so.
I think the only place I'm aware of is, is Meansport.
Oh, you can?
Yeah.
Meansport.
You can rent cross-country skis?
Yeah.
I'm going to, I'm going to charge them for advertising now. With that word, I'd like to get an approval for that, with those five changes.
I'll make a motion, we approve the Snow Bowl park recreation price list with those changes.
I second.
Discussion, halls in favor, 4-0. Thank you, gang. What's the next one, Audra?
Next is codes and planning.
Oh, goodness. So, first piece is?
So Jeremy did a little memo explaining some of the changes. So, public hearing fees for subdivision site plan, ZBA. The idea here was to cover the cost of the hearing notice. And, you know, for that, that to be part of the fee, because it wasn't in the past.
They for the hearing notice, it's like a...
We did in the past, yeah.
Yeah. And it's a legal requirement?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
In this memo, which, I'm looking at code and plan and fee schedule, but then in the memo, it talks about demolition fees, and it talks about shoreline zoning and...
Yeah, just kind of talking about the first one.
Public hearing fees only.
Well, that's, yeah, so it's, it's within subdivision, site plan review, and...
And, but he's talking about, when I read this, the actual cost of advertising, he's talking actual cost thing, to be paid upfront, along with the actual cost of...
And that comes down at the end of it.
Yeah, that's right.
And that made a lot of sense, I think.
I think it does, too.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's not nearly enough, when you think about what has to happen, the amount of probably additional advertising that should happen in a more effective way, if we really wanted to, to get into it. But just the impact of all of this stuff, how much staff time it takes, and...
It's huge.
It's, it's massive. So I'm, I agree with all of...
And I guess that's sort of the rule of thumb for all of these, is that, you know, we should be trying to, because this is not, like, somebody was saying earlier, this is not something that is equally used by all Camden residents, so the idea is that you're covering the cost of administering and carrying out these functions.
Makes a lot of sense. I'm not, I still, I still agree, and I think most members here are fairly reasonable for talent ourselves.
So are we going to go item by item, or are we going to?
Oh, just the, the ones that change, right?
Changes, yeah.
That are in blue and red.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we have the authority and the responsibility to look at all the fees, not just the ones that Jeremy suggested that we change. But, so if we want to start with Jer, with the suggested changes, is that how you want to do it? I have a number of comments, so I'm asking you how to structure that.
I think that, that, yeah, to Sophie's point, I think we should look at the changes that are being requested, see if they're reasonable, and if there's anything else that stand out of sore thumb. You know, remember, this is work that they've gone through to analyze, is to recommend a change for a reason. There's got to be reasons, if we're going to open up every line item, you know what? Then I have to have Jeremy here, otherwise we're not going to discuss it.
Well, Jeremy's here.
Well, my point is, my point...
Says, right here, I am here if you need.
Yeah, I know, I understand. But if, you know, we're going to go through every line item, that's a...
No, I don't have comments on everything.
Okay, let's, let's do the blue and red first, and then see where we are, if there's anything of, of significance. I, I have to trust Jeremy would have recommended a change if he thought it was necessary. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, well, sure. It's not that I don't trust Jeremy, I think that Jeremy can just be...
No, it's not a trust factor.
Some of it's a philosophical thing, it's what you're trying to...
Totally, if I were to compare this to other towns I've been involved in, it'd be hellishly low, but you know, that, you know, once...
Jeremy's trying to tread lightly, I imagine, but we can certainly ask Jeremy more if we're, so...
We can, let's just do the changes first, and we can bring him on if you wanted to, it's fine.
Do you want me to talk about the next three, and then, you know, if you have questions, Jeremy can answer them?
Sure.
And then you can get into changes that you would like to see in addition to maybe what was recommended?
Well, that's what I was asking, should we go through, like, because I, most of Jeremy's suggested changes, I just think should probably be more. Do you want me to bring Jeremy on?
Sure.
Okay.
I can do it. I'd like to hear from you.
Okay, all right.
Go ahead, Audra.
Sorry, accidentally clicked up. Okay, so the next, the next change that was proposed was having a stratified demolition fee, so for buildings that are under 400 square feet, you would charge $50, and those above 400 square feet would be the, the $2.50, which was what was, I think it was, was it changed to $2.50 last year or the year before?
Two years ago.
Two years ago.
Please, love.
I, I think that's a good move to, and recognize that, you know, small buildings, you don't need to charge that much, I thought that was...
Oh, that small building, he's talking about a shed.
Right, that's what I mean.
You know, it's not really very big.
Under 400 square feet.
Right.
Yeah.
And a single car garage as well, generally falls under that as well.
Yeah, that's true, yeah, you're right. You're right. The only question, you know, greater than 400 square feet, that's when it gets a little fuzzy, because what if you, what if you're dealing with a, with a, with a mega facility?
I was going to ask that, like, what happens when, when it's 3, 3,000 square feet?
Yeah.
Still the same, that's why we could go for further stratification of demolition fees, but it's more, what really is, should be more of the qualifier should be like presence or absence of lead paint and asbestos, and, but since we don't really do much reviewing of any of this anyway.
True.
This was the topic of, it used to be much lower, and a couple of years ago, in a similar situation as this, a couple of us said, hey, this should be more expensive, and then we did it across the board.
Yeah.
And then it's been a couple times a little, a little uncomfortable for the codes office, because they have to implement this higher fee across the board. But really, there are certainly cases where that fee should be higher, given the...
Well, what you could do is you could have $250 for every incremental 400 square feet. This way, it's one number, but, but you just...
We've got like $250, clearly thousands...
Or square feet, yeah.
Over and above each year, square feet. If you want, any reason why you wouldn't do something like that, Jeremy, is that just because it more work for you?
No, I mean, we could do that, I mean, the fees are supposed to cover your, our cost to administer the permit and do inspections, et cetera. So, I mean, if you're getting up there into the, you know, a 4,000 square foot home, would be at what, a $1,000 permit, right? The demo, if you're talking about it. So, I'm not, to be honest, I don't think we do that amount of work, and I'm just being honest about what fees are generally by law supposed to, and they're supposed to, you know, your, the work that goes into it. So, I don't necessarily have a problem with that. I mean, we are seeing, I will say, right now, a lot of proposed demolitions of very large homes on, on the ocean, to be honest with you, that are going away, and they're rebuilding new homes. So, I mean, there's some significant demolition happening in the coming year.
Yeah, when you, if you get into demolition, but you're going to find, oftentimes in a big demolition, you're going to find something that may be, you know, miss like asbestos or things like that in older homes. Doesn't that increase your cost?
Well, asbestos, the way asbestos and, you know, mercury and light fixtures are handled and things like that are handled through the DEP.
Okay.
And you provide notice, and they have to do a notification form to us. You know, that's how that's generally handled. I would, at some point, we've talked about it in the past, try to, I'd like to deal with dust from demolitions in the future, but I think we do have that ability to manage dust under our existing performance standards. That does require inspections, and that does require being on-site for demolition. So if you are talking about, you know, raising a fee, it should be, kind of go hand in hand with what it costs. And, you know, I could see doing an inspection two or three times, potentially on a large demo. You know, I am trying to do, we are trying to do more inspections on the front end, especially in the shoreline zone, kind of erosion control.
Yeah.
Erosion control is a significant issue on demolitions as well. So I, I would like to do inspections before they actually start moving earth and start doing demo, to make sure erosion control's in place and those kinds of things. So, you know, the $2.50 was a significant jump from what it was prior to a couple of years ago. We ran into issues like you folks have talked about, where people have come in to demo a small shed, or a small garage, and, you know, with a straight face, we have to tell them, yeah, that's $2.50, and, you know, it's not even, doesn't even cost $2.50 for a permit to build that small shed. So that's why we came up with that number. You know, if you want to go to 500, I think that's probably, you know, re...
Well, no, I think, I think the issue, Jeremy, I think the issue, Jeremy, is whether or not there's things that can happen that cost you more, your team, more time, and, and, but I also hear that this is a bit of a work in process, and you're monitoring very closely, and I guess you're saying this feels good to you right at the moment, and it's a, you're basically separating the size of structures, Mark.
Jeremy, where do our fees fit relatively to other towns, other cities?
Our demo fee of the $2.50 is much greater than most communities. Our, our, our general fees for building permits are pretty much consistent with what's going on in the region and out in the south. But if you're talking about demo, ours are generally higher than most. But that doesn't mean they should be this high, or they couldn't be higher.
Okay.
And I guess, just to make another point, so it isn't just about the administrative impact that you set fees for, there's also a lot of policy decision that goes into this and looking at broader community impacts. So I think that that was, I mean, and I know, you know, most of you were still here when that conversation happened two years ago, but the, the demo fee, it was just as much about acknowledging the impact as it was any sort of like administrative time.
Right.
Yep. Agreed with that?
Right.
Allison, that's our hand up.
Yeah, Allison, go ahead.
the, the demo fee, it was just as much about acknowledging the impact as it was any sort of like administrative time.
Right.
Yep. Agreed with that?
Right.
Allison, that's our hand up.
Alice, go ahead. Yeah, Alice, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I think that it's, when we talk about the cost of administering these building permits or these, you know, any of, any of these things, it's kind of similar to the way we set bag fees at Midco Solid Waste. And the, you know, the idea is to pass along the cost of MSW disposal to the, you know, producers of that waste. And it's not just the cost of hauling the trash to another landfill or an incinerator, plus the cost of, you know, per ton of it being there. It's the cost of having a manager. It's the cost of having a facility. It's the cost of the road. It's all of these things. And the fact that you're sitting here tonight talking about this, all of the times that each, that, that the town gets complaints because of a building being demolished and there's dust, and then us having to go through and say, well, these are the things we can control and these are the things we can't. And just dealing with the perception from people that we should be monitoring all of these things. So there's that. There's, it's, it's very clear that we often don't have the ability to go out and monitor proactively every single site that's, you know, open in town. A lot of it, because of all the stuff that's going on, has to rely on the complaint based system. And so the more we're, you know, when we're hearing, like what I'm hearing you say is that there's lots of stuff happening in town. There's lots of, there are lots of proposed projects. To me that says we're gonna need more resources to be able to, like the level of expectation that Camden residents have, I think in terms of like our ability to protect the environment and to protect neighbors is pretty, like, high. Just look at Atlantic Ave and what happened there. And, you know, they're just building, taking a house down and building it. And you end up with half the town property clear cut. So, I, I think all the fees are pretty low and that we should increase them, especially like shoreline. I mean, the shoreline, I guess we can wait until we get to that section, but.
Okay. But any, any more comments on the demolition items at 250 and 50?
I, I don't think going up to 500 on demo is a problem.
No, over, over 1,000 square foot.
Well, you, you have to break, create another tier, Jeremy, I think, if you're gonna do that.
Yeah.
You know, I don't care what the tier is, but if you're gonna do that, it's fine with me. But it has to be over 1,000 square feet or something, some number like that. That's fine. Why don't we add it, add to Jeremy?
Have it over from 401 to 1,000 to 999, it's, it's 250. Over 1,000 and over, it's 1,000 bucks.
That's what you're saying? That's same thing with 400 square feet. If you got 399.
Why are we putting, sorry, why are we putting $1,000 for 1,000, over 1,000 square feet? I thought 500.
500.
500.
You said 500, Jeremy.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine.
All right.
And I mean, I was, I was.
Okay. So the next one, which.
For gold.
Shoreland zone, you're proposing major construction at whatever major means, 100 to 200 dollars and doubling it.
Yeah, and this, yeah, and so this falls into categories of generally like a, a, whether someone's doing an expansion in the shoreline zone or they're doing significant earthwork in the shoreline zone. This would be on top of building permit fees that.
I see, I see.
Submitted. So, you know, the 200, again, I think that's higher than most communities. It doesn't mean it's the right fee necessarily, but I do feel like it is appropriate for the time that we end up having to put into the review of the shoreline perspective. You know, the shoreline overlay standards of a project. I think that's, it's a reasonable fee.
Right, right.
I would, I would add, since we're talking about shoreline zone and just to comment to what Allison mentioned earlier about erosion control. Later on in the agenda, we're having a discussion about erosion control amendment. I would like to see, and I didn't include it here, an erosion control inspection fee, so that when someone does do earthwork, they have to call us for an inspection of that cell fence or that erosion control burn prior to getting underway. I don't think that's a problem. I think that's a good, good thing to add. But I do think the 200 is reasonable. Flood hazard is a similar thing. It's more.
Wait one second, one second, Jeremy, hold on. Go ahead, Sophie.
Yeah.
I just have a question. Is minor and major clearly defined in the ordinance or somewhere?
It is not defined in the ordinance. And that was left to the code officer to make that decision what that was. And so what that generally is are when we have someone that wants to remove a handful of trees in the shoreline zone, which requires the forester to get involved, requires the code officer to review it. That's a minor. But when you're talking about soil disturbance, massive landscaping projects, re, you know, expansions in the shoreline zone, re, rebuilding of homes in the shoreline zone, vegetation clearing, that's beyond the scope of removing a handful of trees or limbing them up. They're, they're major. That require.
So, so, so in hypothetically, if somebody removed trees, but in a major way, but thought it was a minor, we could run into ordinance and code enforcement, ordinance enforcement and find them. So, I, I, I know it's always hard to, for those projects to define what's minor and major. But maybe is there a way for us to, to provide guidance or examples so people know? Because especially when you go from 50 to 200, it's four times as expensive.
There's gonna be a major incentive to be like, well, I guess that's a minor one.
Right.
But it also depends on what kind of.
Well, I can, I can draft up a what, a definition of what minor and major is and include it and share it with.
Are you gonna, are you, did I hear you say you're also gonna insert another line in each, those for erosion control inspection?
Yeah, that was my just thought, just listening to this conversation. I mean, Allison is right. I mean, when, when we, people disturb soil, when they demo a house, you know, there's erosion control needs to be up. And oftentimes we see that erosion control not installed correctly. And so we're, we're there in response or we're there back, you know, for another inspection and we, we identify something. To be honest, from, to being proactive to protect the environment and the resources, I think it's prudent to do an initial inspection on erosion control.
It should be required inspection.
Yeah, yeah. And I don't think that's a problem to, to, to require a fee for that.
All right, go ahead, Allison.
So that would be one approach. Another approach, which, I mean, to me, that sounds a little bit like the town of Camden's gonna open up a school to teach people how to do their job correctly. I worry that we don't have the resources to be doing that and that, although, I mean, the, the goal of what you're proposing, I like really support. But what about, I'd rather go the route of, of requiring some kind of certification similar to what we do for the, like master drain layers in order to touch the town sewer system. You have to be certified in plumbing. Could we, I mean, their DEP provides erosion control training. I'd rather be looking toward requiring that contractors that work in town, you know, demonstrate that they have that certification.
I, I will, I will say, most of the earthwork contractors do have certification. You know, again, certification just means going through TP's training class. It doesn't mean they always get it right. But in order to do any earthwork in the shoreline zone currently under state law, you have to be a certi, you have to be certified by the DEP. We.
Do we verify that in any way or?
We do. And someone actually just was in for a demo permit yesterday and I asked for verification on, on their certification of their earthwork contractor. So we.
So this seems like it takes a lot of time. The every, every little bit of that you're saying here makes me feel like this takes a massive amount of, of staff time to verify all these things, to research all these things. The idea that you can just cut down a handful of trees in the shoreline zone and have that all like signed off on and then inspected and all of these things for $50. You can't do much for $50 these days. I, I can't. We don't have enough time to do everything that we need to do in the planning office. And so I guess, I just, it feels like we always manage to have enough time to get, for the planning board, to get to these site plan reviews, for all this development to actually happen. But what we never have time to do is to do the ordinance reviews and change things.
True.
That's what's slipping through the cracks where as we're allowing all of this little stuff to go forward. It just, it feels like it needs to, it needs to cost more and it needs to be able to allow us to fund positions that can do all the other stuff.
I think, I agree with you to changing the, the regular ordinance and that. But there's also, I've seen many times when towns take the step to say to recognize that when and if the code enforcement individual wants to do an erosion inspection or feels he needs to do, there's a fee for it. There's a fee for it right now. It doesn't have to be a required one. It can be just, it, it, so many times I've seen when code people are going to various sites and they see that the erosion control is not working correctly because it's raining like hell outside. And, and they, they're gonna spend time working with the contractor to fix that. That's the kind of fee you need to have now.
But then that's sort of like discretionary. If they're saying, then that puts them in the position where they're like, I've decided to assess a fee and that's uncomfortable for them every time and they generally opt not to do it.
I'm sorry, then they have to, you know, do their due diligence. Go ahead, Jeremy.
I just, I, you know, I think you're right. And last year, I think it was when we included a reinspection fee for certain, for certain inspections. That was what we were trying to do because we do get called for inspections. And I'm, you know, plumbing and electrical or building for framing or insulation inspection or plumbing fixture installation, we get there and it's not ready. And normally in the past, that's just been part of, you know, it's just part of the deal. We'll come back with, now we're charging fees for that. And that's part of the, you know, we did change that. So.
All right. It's just a.
You want to include, if you want to include an erosion control inspection and a, a reinspection fee for, you know, that's not a problem.
It just gives us the right to say, when you're going on a site to assess some of the stuff we've had happen recently with tree cutting and, and say that, you know, the erosion control is not appropriate, there could, and it's gonna be a charge for that to inspect it when you fix it. You know, it's, it's, it is discretionary, absolutely. Because to get to the point of changing the ordinance is, that could take years.
Well, we can change a lot of this stuff, but are we even keeping up with the cost of inflation, with like inflation or anything on this stuff? I mean, it's.
Say that again?
What is our total revenue that we're bringing? A few years back, the planning board went through and they did a, like a deep dive into sort of the trajectory of the, a total revenue brought in by the, by the department and all of these different data points. And they, they determined that they just needed to raise the fees across the board. This is before I was on the select board.
Right, right. They did an analysis of how many hours they spent and how much money was taken in.
And among other things and.
Yeah, I mean, that's an analysis that I don't think we have at this point, but it's a good idea to look at that kind of thing. But fees, I, I doubt that our time card system has the person's time spent against each module, each, each.
No, I mean, no.
No, not like that. More like, and most people there are salaried in the.
Yeah, they're not paid by the, it's not piece me.
But back to the issue of, I, I just suggest we put something in for a, a starting point, to have an erosion control inspection. And, and yes, it has to be discretionary and that's fine. But that's, that's already happening. We've had one happen on the street here with erosion control was not adequate.
It's almost never adequate, but.
Well, I gotta start somewhere.
Sure. I mean, it just, I don't know who's gonna do all this stuff because they don't have enough time to do it.
I, I, I get that. I get that. But I'd like to have it in my back pocket if I'm an inspector saying, we're gonna have to do an inspection of that. It's gonna cost you 50 bucks, whatever the number.
Maybe you and I can get trained to be inspectors and we can go out and.
Anyhow, Jeremy, just something that throws it out there as a discretionary item.
I can bring that back to you if you'd like.
Might be smart. Might be smart. We're not finished yet. That's, that's just one. We haven't discussed yet flood hazard, which is being increased by $50. I'm not sure what two part means, major two part.
And that, I can speak to that, Bob. A one part permit is for what's called.
Yeah, yeah, I know what it is.
And that's, that is defined.
Yes, it is.
A major is when you're actually building a structure that has a finished floor.
Yep.
So, you're also doing a building permit fee on top of this.
Got it, got it.
So.
Okay, thank you.
What about like a renovation in the, in the flood zone? Like a major renovation?
That would be a major depending on, again, the definition and the scope of the work. But generally renovations are, are major.
I mean, I would tend to think that just the process of determining whether something is a major or, or minor change or development in, in the flood zone, just that alone would cost the town about $250. Not to mention the actual, I mean, there, our flood plain ordinance is kind, is almost archaic in terms, it's like the bare minimum that you can have legally. And there's a lot that needs to be done to improve that.
I have, I do have a new flood zone in the work, or flood ordinance in the works, ready to go. I'm waiting for the DEP to address changes in height in that, the working flood plain management programs.
Oh, I see.
I'm just waiting for the state to.
I would love to review that.
I don't think it's ready yet.
The flood, but why do we need two fees for the flood hazard?
Why?
Yeah.
Because they're very different in scope. The part actually has, the engineer has to submit a elevation certificate at the end of the project in order, well, in the middle of the project and then at the end of the project in order for them to continue with their work.
Yep.
That's a requirement in the flood zone, in the flood.
Can we get a, is there a breakdown available somewhere of how many of these we do?
Issue per year.
Yeah, I can get that for you.
I would love to, that might help me make more meaningful comments.
Get that for you.
Let's, let's, yeah. Let's talk to planning board changes. The only thing, the only thing I see is the public hearing fee, you've added the cost of required hearing notices. And I assume this is publication costs?
Yeah. So what we were finding, and this is for all site plans, you know, it comes to the planning board. Traditionally, it's just been $150 hearing fee. I mean, I've got some zoning amendments that are moving forward that are the town that we're proposing that you'll, you'll find, you're here about soon. Mark's heard about them and they're available on the YouTube channel to watch and listen. But right, those notices, you know, I've got a notice that's gonna cost $580 or something in the paper.
Wow.
And, and all we charge is 150 bucks.
Great, great. I, I was thinking a newspaper ad that costs 1250 or something, you know, 12 dollars and 50 cents, you're talking big.
Oh, no, Bob.
Serious change.
Newspaper, it's, things have changed a lot when it comes to notices and required by law.
That makes a lot of sense. Okay.
I think that was back in 1947 when they cost that much.
It was the year before he was born. You're right.
It's before the internet.
Then on site plan review, Jeremy, you've gone on full site plan and site plan amendment. Yeah, you can see the 400 and 300. I, I know Camden doesn't see a heck of a lot of mega projects, but site plan review for large projects, 400 seems low.
It does seem low. And a lot of towns do a 10,000 square foot cutoff or, and that's where.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have that.
We don't have that. We, we could, I think we would.
No.
I, I don't think that's.
You're talking about.
Unreasonable to do a 10,000 square foot or greater and charge them $1,000, to be honest with you.
Well, what do we charge for a project like, like a, a, a school?
The school was, I think it was 275 or maybe even before that, it was, it was less than that. I know, Bob. I mean, I hear you.
It's a school.
I, I get it. But I'm just.
Lyman Morris, for instance.
We didn't, we didn't raise the bill.
No, I'm just talking about the magnitude of the project, not whether it was a school or not. We don't get big projects.
Lyman Morris on the harbor, that was the same. That was 275.
It's a good example. 275 for Lyman Morris.
That's crazy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just watching a couple of those meetings is, it's clear how much work goes into it.
Well, I mean, you could have instead of a, of a square footage, would residential and commercial be a different?
We don't require site plan review for residential, which is another problem, but.
That's, yeah, that's.
I suppose you can.
And our commercial was relatively small here.
Okay.
It is. But there's the potential.
Well, I mean, any place, you, you pay more than $500 for a full site plan for a commercial project that I've ever seen.
Yeah, our, our, again, our fees are pretty consistent. It doesn't mean it's right or wrong. They're pretty consistent.
I get it. I get it. I get it. Hearing notice to be invoiced.
Be consistent with what?
Sounds around.
Other communities, fees?
I don't know why that is. Okay, thank you.
All right, yeah. Public hearing fee, same thing. You're adding the cost of publications and you're doing the same thing with the public hearing fee for Board of Appeals. They're, they're identical. You're adding the publication cost again.
That makes sense.
Makes sense.
And that's, that's the end of the blue or red changes that I see in here.
Those are all the changes, yeah.
Yep. So, what I heard was adding shoreline, shoreline inspection dollars for erosion controls, the only thing we had kind of a comeback for, for something to slip in there. And again, it's more of a placeholder than an actual, you know.
I'm gonna include that in not just the shoreline zone, Bob. I'm gonna do that across the board, I think.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, yeah, that's a good idea.
Jeremy, you have a typo. Right at the beginning, residential fees, one and two family application fee and then permit FES.
All right, I don't see it. Hold on.
It's on the, right under residential, one and two family at the, at the very top.
What does it say?
Permit FES, which is festive, but not.
It should read, should read fees.
Should read, it's F E S S. It should be F E E S.
Are you?
Yeah, are you into flat fees or one and two family?
One and two family.
And which line is it?
Second line.
Oh, permit FES, right.
Oh, I see. Thank you.
Yep, okay.
It's when you get Fest Parker to come in and, and look at the.
Yeah, thank you.
What's that you mean in French?
So I think.
The wireless tower fee, I'm just trying to imagine what would happen if a wireless tower came before the planning board and what the impact would be. Is that, are we anticipating wireless?
Are you talking about the antenna or the tower?
I'm, I am speaking only to the way it is worded on our thing. Wireless tower, new.
Yeah.
Oh, you are talking about a tower, not an antenna.
I don't know if that's an antenna. That is a different fee or?
I'm looking at.
That is for a new tower. That is for a new tower, not antenna. Antenna are handled under building permit.
Yep.
As are, as are new towers. If you, um, towers or commercial, there's a $40 minimum plus a, um, it's $40 per, per $1,000 construction cost. So it's not just the site plan review fee, but I hear you, Allison. I mean, the wireless tower one, if you want that higher, we can do that. That's just for the site plan. That's not all the fees that are collected for the installation of a, of a cell tower.
Yeah, I don't think $40 per $1,000 cost is out of whack.
I'm just looking at the site plan review cost.
Oh.
That's all.
Right.
I was looking at permit fees.
Right.
Oh, I'm still back on.
Oh, you're still on the site plan.
Sorry if I missed a jump.
Wireless tower, new 300, that's nothing.
Yeah.
It should be like a thousand bucks or whatever.
We're gonna have to do research.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, for the wireless tower.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we're, not that I, I do have some issues with cell phone service around here, but, um, I, so I don't want to close the door entirely, but I, I, yeah, I mean, I just, it makes me, also the fact that we have this new fee, I, I, it makes me want, I just have questions like, are we anticipating wireless towers? Should we know something more?
Yes. We should know something more.
That seems like we're like, I don't know. I, I, I see no risk to turning that into a.
A thousand.
A thousand.
Because who's gonna install a tower? It's, it has to be a, it's a commercial enterprise. Nobody, you know, is gonna install a tower. Because who's going to install a tower? It's, it has to be a, it's a commercial enterprise. Nobody, you know, is going to install a tower.
Trouble finding a line on your.
On the site plan review, it's, it's, do you see the blue?
Under site plan review fee for, for new towers.
It's two lines above hearing notices in blue in the site plan review.
No, no, I think you just missed it.
It's right here on the screen.
On the screen.
You see on the screen, you see the, at the bottom, hearing notices, and you go two up, it's wireless tower. New wireless tower fees for the site plan review 300. It should be at least a thousand.
Let's go, that's fine.
But I also want, I, I mean, on that topic, we should really dig into the issues around 5G.
Oh, yeah.
Because we, we don't want to, we, we have to be very careful.
I totally agree. I'm like, is this our opportunity to have a $50,000 fee for every, like.
And you go, yeah.
All right, $1,000, Jeremy, for that one.
Thanks.
All right.
And.
Can I ask a question? Let me interrupt real quick. A question about that. I heard that the, the way the rules, federal rules are, that we don't have a lot of say in where they place the towers.
No, actually, so.
Isn't really true.
Yeah.
Not really true, no. So did, did you see that BD Parker sent us some really interesting documentation that I, I scanned, and there are some places where you can require or request that those towers are not placed near schools or public hospitals or retirement homes.
That's a request.
That, just because the health impact are not clear. So, so I think it's something we need to look into.
I think we've been having towers, we've been having towers put in and, and without much notification to us.
Well, they're, they're, you gotta be careful. There's two things going on here. The tower's being put up and their antennas being put up. And the antennas is what drives the whole problem. We have one 200, 200 yards from us right here.
Right.
That's the top of the town, we had no say in it.
Right.
Don't we have one on the top of the building too?
Here?
You do issue permits for antennas.
Okay. No, I know that.
You tell us about all the antennas in town.
I was responding to Mark's comment about the, the environmental harmful, like ozone from high voltage.
No, I was just more commenting about that. I've read that we just don't have a lot of say, as much say as we'd like to have.
Do have a wireless telecommunications facility siting ordinance.
We do.
And the issue is more around 5G than, than 3 and 4G ever before. That's, that's the, that's the.
Let's, let's keep moving on. Right now I see that it's another change to the one I mentioned.
Yep, yep.
Um, 10,000.
You're going to change site plan review at all from 400 to 1,000 for projects over certain size?
Not anything in the shorelands. I mean, I feel like we need to table this.
We, we did say over 1,000 square feet. If, if you call, not site plan, I'm sorry, that was demolition, demolition, sorry. Site plan review, I, you know, it's, it, it doesn't seem that far off to me, you know, we're doing, we're not doing that much here.
Apparently, I don't think there's a much enough planning.
I discuss, is this something that you feel like you need a workshop for? Because I feel like this is kind of turning into more of a workshop.
Yeah, we're turning into a workshop, we are turning into a workshop, there's no question about it. No, we are. We can go through every line item, Allison, in a workshop.
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah, I guess if there's more discussion than.
Well, I think we should first of all take these changes and, and publish them.
Yes.
And by the way, this doesn't hurt to get these in the queue while we're doing a workshop, we can always change them.
Yeah.
Then we're going to be told, this is the time, one time a year, you set the fees and then within 60 days.
I'm the one who's kind of started this practice, so it's flexible and changeable.
It's flexible. Every other town does it that way, as, as information changes. So I suggest we make these changes to this, get it, get it out there, get it published, and then we have a workshop on, you know, a lo, longer term planning and look at this thing, which, which would reflected to ordinances, another thing, because that, that bucket's deep.
There are all kinds of fees that are, that are in ordinances too, that we keep making mental notes of, like, where can we change these, like parking tickets and.
So what I'm suggesting is we just approve with these changes, Jeremy, and the board approves them with these changes that we've discussed here, and then we'll schedule a workshop to get deeper into it. I think that's smart.
I agree.
Sure, sounds good.
All right.
I'll make a motion that we approve the, let me get to the title here, that we approve the fee order for codes and planning with the changes we've discussed this evening.
My second.
Question. Has a favor. Against. Three to one, passes, thank you.
And I just want to clarify to Caitlin that I will give you a list of the changes that were discussed.
I have them written down too.
Okay.
Onto our famous Opera House, is that correct?
Yes.
This is another tough one.
I mean, yeah.
This hasn't really, they cleaned it up a few years ago when it's pretty.
They didn't change anything as I see it here, Mark, is that correct?
Yeah, there's nothing that I'm aware of, I haven't been in.
Audrey, you agree with that?
Yeah, that, no, they, they haven't proposed any changes since 2018, and it's all very uncertain, and Dave's had to be pretty flexible because of COVID, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure I've ever understood the upper fees, to tell you the truth.
I mean, that's the thing, what, sorry.
It's, 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 it's challenging, to say the least, but but they're proposing no change because.
I mean.
Because you don't know if it's going to be in person or.
Yeah, and he's had to sort of make so many adjustments on the fly because, you know, at one point, we could only do 50% capacity and it changed to 75 and, you know, all the different.
And they're still doing limited seating.
Right.
I know.
So, yeah, he's had to be very nimble and responsive, so.
I see.
So, I, I don't think we need to go into major changes until we know what the world is going to be for, for them.
Yeah. Does the Opera House committee meet?
They have had, I went to one meeting, they've had, they've had some discussions. I think they've only had one official meeting.
Do they live stream their meetings?
I don't, like I said, I think they've only had one meeting. I don't believe it was livestreamed.
Will we make sure that if, that, because I have a general deficit of understanding in terms of, like, the overall structure of the Opera House, and it's not a massive concern of mine, and I perceive it as a positive thing, certainly, but I, I do think from time to time, we should be looking at what is the goal, you know, what, how much does the Opera House cost us? What is the goal? I was reading some old planning documents the other day, and it was talking about how the whole purpose of the Opera House was to bring people to town to support the businesses. And I was like, oh, okay, interesting, that's like a, and, you know, that it's understood that it operates at a significant deficit. And I think that all of that is, is justifiable, but that it's probably worth it to, you know, just revisit it and understand it from time to time. If we're running something that we are, you know, or, look at what happens with the snowball. The snowball loses like a tiny bit of money, and it's like, like, it's like a crisis, but we, we budget, I mean, we budget every year to lose a significant amount of money on the, on the Opera House and.
What I suggest is, is I don't believe they've had in-person meetings, just one that I'm aware of, but Dave communicates with them through emails. You may want to ask him to be added to the email.
Oh, I. No, I, I mean, I think we should be, try to be consistent with the committees too.
Uh huh.
That.
They either meet or they don't.
Yeah.
You know.
And they.
And it's streamlined.
You know, I, I don't know if we brought the Opera House committee back or, but if they do meet, I definitely think it needs to be a livestream thing so that we can all.
Well, I, I think what, what I'm saying is he is notifying them of what's going on. It's not like they're having a meeting.
The general public would miss out on any of that.
It seems to me, and what I would expect to see here is that the Opera House committee met on these fees, and we suggest we hold the fort because of what you just said, Mark, for example. We're in a conundrum right now with the virus spinning this way and that way, and until we, until that light clears, we really don't want to make any changes.
I, I don't believe that the Opera House committee has met.
Okay.
They didn't meet to go over these fees, these are the fees the way it is.
I think they should, and I think they should review this and give us a recommendation as to why, because I can look at these numbers, they don't mean anything to me.
Do we have people on the Opera House committee?
I thought we did.
I just don't know.
There's still, there's still some, and I don't know, I know we just had somebody drop off.
I mean, that seems like one that we should look at and get people, because we do need help, I mean, that's what the purpose of the committees.
They've had a number of good people and they've been steady for years, and, and some of the people contribute by, you know, helping with, with the shows. Most of the, most of the work for them has been contributing, helping, helping out at shows, volunteering for shows.
They even have to help us understand things sometimes too.
Let's, let's, let's agree, let's at some point discuss who is on the Opera Committee, make sure we have a full committee, and two, that they can meet and discuss this, so we can have an understanding. To me, they'll just look at this without, you know, Jeremy's help, Audra's help, and yours, Mark, even. I think we, because to me, looking at this, I, I'm flummoxed.
Yeah, I thought perhaps Dave might be here to go with this.
I think it's probably good. Generally, when I dig into it, it's fine, but I just don't know.
It is, it is. When Dave has explained in the past and, and the committee, yeah, I, I kind, I got it, but they're holding the fees, and I'm presuming that we, they're holding it because of the conundrum again with the virus. That's cool, but, you know, is that, we should, we should have that at least in writing, if not a presentation by day, okay?
Agreed. So, but we're, we're voting on them?
I think we hold off, right?
I would hold off, I would hold off. I mean, because it's status quo. If we're not changing, it doesn't really change anything.
Draft point.
All right, with that, we'll move on to our next action item, which is, well, barely announcing that we rescheduled the link, meeting with the Lincolnville Select Board for a Select Board joint workshop regarding the Lake McGuntakook and the dams associated, to Monday, February 7th at 5:30 PM here.
Yes, so that was proposed by the Lincolnville Select Board.
And I believe all the board members said they are aware and can make that time and meeting location, et cetera. This was postponed from the last time we had the schedule. C, item C is to reschedule, pick a date for the parking management study public meeting, which, again, is being rescheduled from, I think it was last week that we originally planned. Any ideas, Audra, when you want to do this, how soon?
Well, John Burke is very flexible, so he said he really, he just needs two weeks' notice and he can make it happen, so.
When we talk of this as a.
So we should talk with the, with the middle school first to find a date with them?
Yeah, they're, I mean, they're pretty flexible too, but, you know, I can, I'll certainly check in with them first.
But you had doubts on the location, you wanted to do something else if it's in person? Oh, because we can't stream, can we?
It's, yeah, it's.
You can.
Can we do the Opera House?
We could.
Yeah, can we do the Opera House?
We should think about this a little bit.
Yeah. Because the Opera House, we can livestream.
Yeah.
Oh, but the whole point was to try to increase participation by, well, like when we had the MDOT stuff, it was at the middle school, and, I mean, the, the middle school is absolutely capable of livestreaming, it would just require some coordination.
Mm-hmm. I don't.
I don't think the, the middle school's auditorium is no larger than the Opera House, the new one.
No, it's not.
I'm thinking we would do it in like the cafeteria.
Cafeteria, yeah.
Well, venue, venue you can choose, but terms to date, Audra, do you want this done in February? I mean, I'm asking just when, what kind of timeframe you want it done.
I think it would be nice to shoot for late February.
Late February. And any given, we have a Select Board only on the 1st and 15th, obviously, two Tuesdays, otherwise, let me just take a look here. What I was, what I was looking at was.
21st through the 25th is winter, winter break.
Yeah.
Gone for most of that.
Okay, so why don't we look at the first week in March, like, March? Oof, wow. Or earlier.
Can we have it the week of the 14th for the?
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna say we could look at Valentine's Day.
Yee-hoo. That's in two weeks.
Yeah, it's not.
Too soon?
It's not. I think we gotta.
You're getting divorced?
Well, I, I guess, are you going that whole week of school vacation?
Yes.
All right, how about the following? How about February 28th, Monday?
Yeah.
Audra?
28th, yeah, let's do it.
What time?
30 PM?
Noon?
Noon?
No.
5:30 PM?
Five, February 28th.
That's, that's what we have. Yeah, that's what we had the last time.
5:30, parking, okay, got it.
And you'll get back to us on the location?
Yeah, yeah, and I, I mean, I'm going to have to talk with the, the middle school a little bit more about it, because I don't know if from the cafeteria, I'm not saying that they can't do it, I'm just saying that we need to be more.
Okay.
It's just like a lot more coordination.
Well, this is a problem, we can all work around it, but you got some time to play with it now?
Yeah.
Onward to the item D, which is the, to provide authorization for our town manager to sign the consent agreement with Martha Rogers.
Yes, so I had a discussion with Martha, and she's fine with a consent agreement as it's presented in your packet, so it's really just giving, you know, authorizing me to sign and execute the agreement.
And, and what's in the packet looks identical, it hasn't changed any significance from?
No, it's really just dates.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
So do I have a motion to authorize saying?
I have one question before we do that.
Oh, go ahead, Mark. Sure.
It's in the ordinance that it costs $500 per tree, is that correct? So that's not something we have any control over. Okay, I will, let me find it here. I'll make a motion that we, we authorize the town manager to sign the consent agreement with Martha L. Rogers.
My second.
Motion made, seconded and discussed. All those in favor? Four, zero, thanks, gang.
That's another example of, of the fees that we have in ordinances that need to be, we need a running list of this stuff so that we can just do it across the board. Get it out of there.
It's a bit mind-boggling.
Yeah, because that's, you can, you know, somebody, somebody can afford it.
I agree, I agree, but we cannot have those covered, I mean.
No, I agree, and we can talk about it forever, but it's a huge amount of work. Discussion item, with the first one, Audra's update on MDOT pedestrian safety program.
So if we could invite Mr. Dave St. Laurent in, because
You got it?
He's gonna, he's gonna remember certain things that I don't. So anyway, I, if, if everyone can remember back to pre-pandemic, we had a meeting in the middle, you were there.
Middle school.
The middle school was not there. Everybody was there. So it was, it was Camden's participation in the Heads Up Pedestrian Safety Program, and the state is, and this is just a follow-up to, the state is making good on their promise of funding some of the priority areas that were talked about during that meeting, and it's sort of done, they're doing it in a, a number of different ways, so there are some big projects where, you know, we, we know about them, and they're, the MDOT is contributing through different sources of funding, but specifically just to that program, they identified a number of different crosswalks and, and intersections on Elm Street in particular that were discussed a lot as, you know, safety issues for pedestrians, and looking at, you know, investing some money to fix up those crossings. And we didn't really want to get into showing plans, because we just had a meeting with them today, and there's some changes that are going to be made. But to give you an idea of the locations and what they're doing, let me kind of start, I'm going to start in the area kind of closest to town, so the first one that they're looking at is the crosswalk that sort of goes between the Blue Harbor House and the Town Motel.
Oh, yeah.
And sort of trying to, to fix that up so that it's safer and there's more space on either side of it, because on, they call it the eastern side of the crosswalk where the Town Motel is.
Oh, yeah.
It's very, very narrow.
Yeah, very.
So they're talking about widening that up, and Dave, do you remember anything else other than, you know, resetting the curb and widening that?
In front of the Blue Harbor and Town Motel, they're going to extend the sidewalk and a little bit of an esplanade. And widen it out, like you said, that was what they were going to do in that location. You, we, we skipped Lake Free Street to.
Oh, sorry.
That one, they're going to be putting the, we're looking at putting the flashing beacon there for the, for the pedestrians to signalize pedestrian crossing. You, you want to move, you want to move south with that, Audra? Do you want to do it, or do you want me to?
How about you go? Because I, I feel like you took notes on every, every change, and I'm trying to remember a lot of it as I go.
Okay, sure. So, so moving up from the Blue Harbor and the Town Motel crosswalk, the next one would be the Norwood Avenue crosswalk?
Yeah.
So, you know, that one was in poor shape. What they're going to be doing there is crosswalk's going to be moved to the north side of the, the Norwood Avenue, so they're moving that crosswalk, and then they're fixing corner on Norwood and Elm. And there will be a small esplanade there also, and a back curb on the east side. So moving up from Norwood south, the next one would be Rennie's. So the Rennie's, the Rennie's crosswalk was, was really, really poor also. That one actually goes right into a catch basin.
Oh.
And so that one is going to be, they're moving the crosswalk south, so it actually will go, will be aligned with the little walkway going into the plaza to the, to the little plaza that's in that area. plaza that's in that area. And they're gonna be putting catch basins on, on the north side, on both sides of the street of the crosswalk to help with water. And then also, we're talking about putting a rapid flashing beacon there also for pedestrian crossing. Another interesting note is that there's actually a little trail on the east side of that. I don't know if people are familiar with that. I think it kind of actually goes down to Union Street and to development over there. And that's pretty well-used. So a lot of people kind of cut through the woods right there.
Yeah.
Then they cross over to Rennie's. So, and that, that's actually, that area was actually identified way, way back as being a potential safety hazard for people crossing and was supposed to slated to have a signal, signal or a warning device there once upon a time. So, and Randy also mentioned he feels it's pretty unsafe. So the next one up from that is Park Street. So Park Street is squaring up the corner and they're fixing two ramps or on all three corners, actually. That one, we're gonna, I'm also, I'm also gonna ask about potentially putting a rapid flashing beacon there. That's pretty much the, the locations of the improvements, which doesn't sound like much, but there's actually quite a bit of work that's gonna be done with these to fix them all. The work is kind of slated to happen in the spring of 2023 or the fall of 2023. It's all part of this heads-up pedestrian safety initiative that we started back in February 6th, 2020. That was the first meeting and then we had a second meeting with the public on March 31st, 2020. We awarded the grant on January 26th, 2021 and it was a $57,200, $57,200 grant with a $14,000 match. So those are the specifics.
What is the drop dead date on the grant?
There's, there's, it's 2023 is the completion.
By the end of 2023?
Yep.
That's good.
They're doing it, right? Is it us that has to, that's, we don't have to do it, right?
They've done all the design, they're gonna manage the construction.
Our match is 40?
I mean-
14.
14, 1-4.
We'll take it. Go ahead.
I have a question, Dave. I, I noticed very often that the crosswalk at French and Brown, between French and Brown and Camden National Bank, people don't stop. And, and in the summer, we do have a little, you know, state law yellow thing, but I, I kind of feel that it's a place where we need to have a little beacon or something like all year round because it's, it happens to me very often that they just don't stop.
Where is this?
By, by French and Brown and-
Going across to Camden National?
Yeah. It's-
So we actually talked about that today also. That was one of the other items. So everybody knows about how when they did the sidewalk improvements in the downtown, there was one area that they, that didn't get done correctly and that was probably the most used crosswalk in town, which is by French and Brown.
Yep.
And there's asphalt ramps there right now to kind of take some of the steepness out of the slope of the tip-down. But we've been working with them to try and come to some type of resolution. It's a tricky spot to make it ADA compliant. So we've pretty much come up with a solution and we're working on that. And I think that might actually realign where that crosswalk crosses over to actually where the bank is as opposed to kind of where the park is. That's still up in the air a little bit, but-
Okay.
One of the issues with putting the rapid flashing beacon in town is they don't like putting those in like the historic district of the downtown. They kind of, they kind of, when you get closer into the downtown, see, we're right on the fringes when you talk about Free Street.
I see.
But then when you start actually getting into the historic downtown, they try not to put those in those locations. And that's what I was told. Doesn't mean it can't happen, but they kind of shy away.
We have talked with them about other pedestrian safety alert devices, like there's sort of, you know, lights that can be inset into the crosswalks.
Into the crosswalks, yeah, yeah.
Push it, it lights up the, you know, stuff like that. So they, they are open to working with us on that and we've said we're open to-
I just noticed that this one is like more than once a week, I, I have to stop because I cannot assume that the car coming, especially from the north, is gonna stop.
Yeah.
Cars coming from the, from the south, they see, but, but around that bend, they just vook.
We're missing one of those yellow signs there too.
I was gonna say that we could put up some signs and then we can also put the, the sign that goes in the middle of the road.
Yeah.
In the summertime, those are actually really helpful.
They're very helpful, yeah.
It's a very complicated, it's a five-corner intersection. It's rather-
The crosswalk is, is very, it's like those two crosswalks, they're very popular. So, anyway, since we're on the topic, thank you, Dave.
Awesome, maybe are we gonna have a buck out there?
I will, I will do a little more to try and make that a little safer for you.
All right. Sounds good. Just don't, just don't cross there. No, but that's, it is a very difficult one. That's very difficult travel. All the signs in the world, still people roll through the stop and go stop sign and red light all the time. It gets, you know, so it's always so exciting.
I give up on this one.
I, me too.
I give up on this one.
All right, Jeremy, thanks so much. I'm Jeremy.
Especially when it says-
Dave, thanks so much.
Thanks out there.
Take care of yourself, man. All right, we have one more, which is, I think Jeremy's gonna address probably the erosion control ordinance changes.
Why can't we do that?
To that ordinance, Jeremy, you want to explain the, just the general philosophy of the changes you're recommending and why, rather than make me try to translate every word?
That's a very good transition.
Sure. If you look at what I sent you all-
Yep.
You can see what our existing language says, our existing erosion control ordinance. All it says is no person shall perform an act or use something in a manner which could cause substantial or avoidable erosion or significantly alter existing drainage patterns of natural water flow in the town. That's all we have. We have nothing else in our ordinance performance standards that regulates or requires the installation of erosion control. There is a state law that requires erosion controls to be installed and maintained when you disturb soil. The DEP, we don't have the ability to enforce that law. That's not how state domain works. So what I have proposed for, in essence, is to keep the, keep the language we have and make that number one. And then I've added two, three, four, and five to this, which for the most part mirrors the state erosion sedimentation control law, which again, all it does is it requires people to install erosion control before soil is disturbed. We've reached to a lot of complaints this year about lawns being redone.
Yep.
Well, you know, where they remove all the graps and they're going to, but there's a period of time where the lawn is wide open and exposed or the area is immediately adjacent to a resource or immediately adjacent to a catch basin.
Yep.
Everyone knows those catch basins drain to a resource. So this ordinance would require that. It also utilizes, it adopts, if you will, by reference, the DEP's published erosion sedimentation control BMP manuals.
Yep.
And there's a manual for contractors and there's a manual for designers and engineers. So this ordinance amendment would bring that, bring that to, that's what people need to design to and to utilize when they're dealing with soil disturbances. And then we did talk briefly about inspections. I would like to add a piece in number three.
Yep.
Where it talks about erosion control measures being in place before the activity. I want to add a piece and I'm gonna work on the language, which will say for permitted projects, erosion controls shall be inspected prior to the activity beginning. And that way, we codify that inspection requirement that we're talking about on the fee schedule. So I think that-
That's your opening to go charging for having to do an inspection if you want to.
Right.
And then could there be a fee there if, so say you go out and you do the inspection and then it's, I feel like there should be a difference between the projects where you go out and it's like, yep, all set, looks good, and then the projects where you're like, okay, I'll be back again tomorrow, I'll be back again tomorrow.
Again, if, if there's a re-inspection fee, you're gonna pay for it the second time.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, perfect.
That's a good idea. No, that's good. That's a great idea. I didn't, this is a segue from what we were just talking about, item three, your Roman numerals, three, whatever it is, not Roman numeral, but lowercase three, that makes a lot of sense. Go ahead, somebody.
I just, just have a short question, Jeremy, and I apologize for my ignorance. In number two, that involves filling, displacing, or exposing. So I understand displacing and exposing. Does filling include adding?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
And we do require a permit for filling and that is defined in our performance standards, what filling is and what, what type of review is required.
Okay.
The code office can issue a permit for a, a filling of soil of a certain area with a permit. And then the planning board is required for filling, of filling of a certain size is what else, so.
What are those numbers in terms of what triggers that?
You know, I should know this, Allison, off the top of my head. It's in the ordinance. I have not looked at re-tweaking that.
Because we've run into issues with that before where it seems like it's, you know, there's always people out there filling in their, the wetlands in their front yard and then it turns out to be not, not a significant enough impact to do anything about it as defined by our blah, blah, blah.
Jeremy, just, go ahead. No, no, finish, you finished commenting, Allison.
No, I mean, I know Jeremy and I have talked about this, so I know he knows what I'm, like, and I guess I'm just saying, is this the right time to, sometimes it's like, I, I want to make sure that we, when we go to change things, we don't miss what would be the, you know, the opportune moment to change other things?
I hear you. I think, I hear you. I think what I need to look at is, I mean, we have, you know, we're, we're counting down the days now before we have to have language done for warrant, warrant articles, et cetera. I mean, we're a few weeks away.
Yep.
I can quickly try to look at something and see, I mean, this one went through a public hearing already.
Yeah.
And I think Bill, is Bill still there or was he there?
He is, yeah.
He is, yeah.
I mean, I think we could tweak, I think we could tweak the erosion control ordinance without necessarily going back to the planning board to add this language about the inspection of, you know, for it. I don't know about how we would change the site plan or that other piece, if I've got enough time to do that. I will certainly look at it tomorrow and this evening with Bill. If we can try to look at something, I'll do it. We've got a workshop on Thursday with the planning board that I think we have five or six zoning amendments that are moving forward in a workshop. And those for a public hearing on the 17th. So I can, if I can try to add this-
Okay.
Something like this to that, I'll do my best.
Okay.
Cool.
Sounds good. Now, that's a great segue to the fees thing we were talking about for inspection, I think. But you had, take a whack at it and we'll see it back, well, we won't see it back until it's more time.
Can I, I have one more comment about this.
You can probably comment on that.
We are gonna have to have a hearing on this, you know, soon and the other ones as well. And what I was trying to do is get one, at least just one out of the way.
Okay.
This is just to let you know what's coming, but there is, Janice will schedule a public hearing for this one coming up.
Okay.
Could we, so back to the, my primary concern with this change before was because it takes, you know, the current language does not exempt agriculture and the proposed language does. Why can't, is there a reason? Why can't we just take out, I, I like what you've done, but why can't we just take out this last-
Agricultural exemption?
The agricultural exemption? Because we don't have an agricultural exemption now. Why do we need that in our proposed language?
That was, again, I, I kind of modeled this and I've used this, this is an ordinance adopted in the networks too, but this was for the most, this is for the most part the state erosion sedimentation control law. I know it was vetted by the AG's office and everyone else, so.
Well, isn't that-
However many lobbyists got involved there and said, I mean, I just don't see the benefit to having that in ours.
Yeah, we don't have a lot of farming.
Because I don't, and we don't have a lot of farming, but I don't want to be arguing about-
This comes from farming, was it bigger farming? Because obviously every farmer tills land to do his crops, you know, by machine or whatever. If they had to do it erosion control, every time they did that, we're driving nuts.
Yeah, well, we don't have that issue now, so.
We, we have a couple of farms. We have a couple of farms, you know, in Camden and technically without that in there, they would be exposed to this.
Um, no, it just basically, they still have to prevent, it's not saying, this doesn't do much, it just, they still, I, they still need to prevent all of that soil from their, you know, tilling a field-
Yep.
-from going into the river.
Yep.
They shouldn't be exempted from having an impact on a natural resource.
It is exempted.
What?
It is exempted. I mean, if there's a problem where there was erosion from an agricultural field that was filled, the process for dealing with that DEP can't even deal with that in an enforcement mechanism. A complaint would come into our office and I've dealt with it in prior employment, a complaint comes in, we forward, we forward the complaints to the Department of Agriculture and the Department of Agriculture responds, they call them the nuisances, it's regulated, this is acted under the Main Right to Farm Act. And then Department of Agriculture works with the farmers to implement agricultural BMPs.
Right.
Okay, great. So that's all, it sounds like they're very well-protected. I don't see that we need it in our ordinance. So if anything ever changes, if it's ever becomes illegal for a farmer to pollute the river, then-
If you think it's covered, we don't need to specify it.
I will chat with Bill on that and if we can pull it out.
All right. All right, thanks, Jeremy. Appreciate it very much. Well, so we'll talk to you soon as we are hitting for our warrant season. With that, I want to turn to Ms. Audra. Do you have any town manager reports you want to make, Audra?
Sure. So Dave St. Laurent and I have continued to meet with representatives from DOT on the Rossin Avenue Bridge project. So we had a good conversation today with the, the project officer who's assigned to the portion of, because the way that the contract is written and it's sort of been split up is DOT is responsible for all the removal and the riverbank stabilization. And then we sort of come in and basically put the bridge, the bridge on footings. But there's a lot of coordination that needs to happen between us and MDOT for all of that to occur. So, you know, sort of talking through some of the, you know, things that we need to keep in mind on that site as we go forward. A lot of it centered around the river itself, because I don't, some of you might remember when we had the feasibility study from Gartley and Dorsky on replacing the bridge.
Oh, yeah.
They, they just did a multimoto vehicle and-
Yeah.
-pedestrians and cyclists.
Yeah.
But part of what came out of the feasibility study was a note around the bend of the river and the alignment of the, the river and, you know, how the bridge sort of chokes up the river at that point. So there was discussion on, you know, what are, what are things that we can do as a result of the bridge removal that are going to fix that problem and mitigate some of the, you know, the issues in that area. So that was a really good conversation with MDOT because they really want to work with us on that portion of it.
Yep.
And I just think that, you know, looking at this project as just removing and replacing a pedestrian bridge would be a lost opportunity for that whole area.
Yep.
So as we move forward with it, you know, I think there's a lot of different things we need to keep in mind in regards to, you know, the tannery and our plans for that site.
Sure.
You know, our plans for the river, flood mitigation, you know, the river walk, all of those things. It's sort of like an area where it's kind of all kind of coming together. We have a lot of opportunities to set ourselves up for those projects into the future. So just kind of wanted to mention that as something that we need to look at holistically and not just plopping a bridge in there.
Sounds great.
So we're continuing to pick away at trying to position ourselves to apply for a grant to the EDA for an event center at Ragged Mountain and working.
What's EDA?
Economic Development Administration.
Thank you.
And as you can imagine, construction costs have changed significantly since 2016.
No.
So, yes, so I think that, you know, we're, we're just trying to figure out sort of the best way forward on that, given the realities of how much it costs to build buildings nowadays. And also, you know, I think that this is all gonna prompt a broader discussion about the future of, you know, that facility. Because we've got, we're facing a number of pretty significant expenses just to keep operating, you know, a ski hill there over the next few years. So we've got the groomer, you know, we've got the match for the land and water conservation fund for the snowmaking.
Yep.
And, you know, then this project. So I think that at some point it'd be really smart to kind of sit down with the select board and just kind of talk about capital, major capital investment in that area into the future. Because, you know, a few of these things, if we want to keep operating the way we're operating, there's not much of a choice. So it's, I think it's a conversation about how do we, how do we want to do that? What do we want it to look like? And just being very intellectually honest about what it means for us as a community. There's a number of projects going on to implement some technology solutions that will help with, you know, communication and also just workflow and permitting and licensing and that sort of thing. So TextMyGov, we're working with them on a text alert system. So there's a number of different things that that's going to do that I, I'm hoping will make things much easier for residents as well as, you know, everybody who works for the town. So push notifications for things like, you know, when there's a parking ban because of a snowstorm. Or have, giving people the ability to text in with simple questions and being redirected to areas on the website where they can find answers to that.
Yep.
Question.
Yep.
And a few different features that I think could be helpful in improving communication. And the iWork system, which would be an online licensing and permitting system, so it would help both with the business licensing side of things as well as Jeremy and his role in the code enforcement office. We just received notification today that we're, it's kind of best to hold off on the site location of development permit that we were working on for Ragged Mountain because there might be some legislative changes that, it won't change the need to do a master plan for that site, but it might mean that we don't need to go through that full permitting process because of small recreational trails.
What on what?
So they're.
That's, that's not something we're lobbying for, is it?
To not have to do it?
Yeah.
Sounds like a loosening of environmental rules.
Not loosening necessarily, but not, I guess like we're kind of, at this stage, it's, it's like if it's a facility, like a public facility versus maybe like a large ski resort like in Western Maine. They're just holding everyone to very different standards. And so the idea is that it'd be consistent across the board.
Although, if you look at the history of the area and the impact of the development that's happened there, I mean, I think we can all pretty confidently say that that's, hasn't been always great. And so I, it reminds me of the time when we found out, when we were advocating for a major rollback of shoreline zoning rules in order to be able to put the river walk like right next to the river. And it seems like a great idea to solve our problem, but I don't know. I don't see, I guess I, I was really supportive of the going forward and trying to do what was the right thing to do with the snowball too, in terms of like a master site plan for.
So we're still, we're still gonna go through that process, but it's just what is the DEP gonna require of us?
Right.
So that's the question. So anyway, the last thing I have. Oh, and we're starting to reach out to some of the local churches to see if there's any interest in partnering with the town on shared use parking agreements. Because that's, that's sort of one of the very preliminary findings of the study is that we have a lot of churches with very large parking lots.
Yep.
That are very, very close to the downtown.
Yeah.
And they're incredibly underutilized. So if there's any way we can kind of come to some sort of mutually beneficial agreement between the town and the churches, it could help. Everybody with, with their goals.
Great idea.
Yeah.
Thank you, Audra. Jeremy, you can select more reports.
Um, yes, Mikosolid Waste, we've approved our budget. And there was a lot of discussion about sort of the long-term planning that needs to happen there. We're gonna be looking at a relatively flat assessment to the towns this year, but also there was sort of widespread acknowledgement of the fact that, that's not gonna be able to stay the same forever unless we increase fees. So that's something that, sort of a renewed philosophical discussion that we need to have on the Mikosolid Waste Board, but it also, you know, involves the select boards, of course, too. About 20 years ago, when we went to the pay as you throw system, they call it, it went from the facility being really in major financial trouble and it costing the towns a whole lot of money, entirely subsidized by taxpayers, really no fees at all, which is really what you do see in a lot of other places where that is just, you know, your waste disposal costs are rolled into your tax bill. 20 years ago, they went to this pay as you throw system and the, the promise sort of at that time was that we were gonna be slowly moving from a taxpayer-funded facility to a user-fee-based system. And they've actually made, we slash they have made a lot of progress in that direction. It's been relatively stable for the past few years. The cost of disposal is gonna continue to go up. Right now, we're still, we're in this like interim period of going to a landfill, which is not something that anybody wants to do. But as the, you know, the state of Maine, I would, we welcome you as part of the discussion. It was a very, there aren't, in, you know, the state, there are not significant options. And so the needing to, in order for there to be options other than landfills, it requires, you know, many towns or a private company getting together and figuring out something different. We with, as a town withdrew from the major mechanism for doing that, which was not something I supported. But, so figuring out sort of what is, and as, right now, we're in this little three-year contract with waste management and we're going to the landfill. But figuring out what is important to us in the long term when we go to sign a longer-term contract, that's, it's almost certainly gonna be more expensive than what we have now. And so probably the, you know, the cost of getting rid of trash is gonna go up. That's something, the Mikosolid Waste Board operates somewhat independently from the select boards, so they get to vote on the budget and sort of assess the towns. But as part of the inter-local agreement, fee increases come to the four select boards, the four participating town select boards to approve. So that is something that will probably be on the horizon. But definitely if you have questions or want to talk more about that, we can use lots of citizen involvement.
Didn't we, didn't we just vote in, in Maine that the, the producers of the packaging have to be recycling and?
Yeah.
That was the brand new, that was a Governor Mills initiative or legislative, I can't remember exactly.
Yeah, so the town actually, you know, we wrote a letter of, of, passed a resolution of support, so the extended producer responsibility laws, which are, Maine is the first state in the country to pass a law of that kind. It's very common in other countries. But it's, you know, basically what it's trying to do is shift the cost of recycling programs onto the companies that are producing the majority of the packaging. Right now, we're in this sort of race to the bottom system where they're always coming out with like, oh, this new cool packaging, like your compostable styrofoam or whatever. And then it's up to municipalities to reactively say, oh, let's see if we can figure out a way to recycle this. And it's just never gonna work that way. So the idea is that, yeah, hopefully if, once they get it through the, all of the detailed rulemaking and all of that stuff, that based on, you know, if our recycling program costs us money, will be, it, you know, be subsidized by fees collected through this system. And so if they, they will, the state will designate what are considered to be readily recyclable items. So like for right now, it's your corrugated cardboard, number two plastic, not glass. A lot of people have a misconception about that. That's not an easily recyclable item for us. But mixed paper is another kind of difficult one, but tin is good, aluminum. So yeah, that is, that's something that we might be able to hope for on the horizon, but yeah, there's, I couldn't, I really enjoy talking about this. We had a great, we had a great meeting.
We had a four-town, talking about four towns, we had a four-town emergency services, management services meeting, EMS meeting last Thursday. Northeast Ambulance made a presentation about how they've been doing contractual-wise and I have to say, they have a new regional director who's been, I think is doing a wonderful job. And they've done a really good job of, of meeting their, their performance criteria in the contract in a very difficult time. There've been lots of, there's bills at the state about how, how much EMS needs help. And they've done a very good job of, of keeping, keeping, keeping us safely covered. The one thing that'll happen is we will, all the four towns, I think, are pretty much aware that there'll be a price increase because they've had to pay more, they've had to up rates. There'll be a price increase when we renew in June and those numbers will come soon, I believe.
I hope so.
They'll be delivered to the town manager soon so we can get them into our budget sessions. So we'll be prepared for a raise there. And then, you know, we'll continue to talk, you know, ourselves about the future of EMS and how we're gonna handle that, but that's down the road.
Cool.
And that's all I have.
Ms. Sophie.
Well, I attended the, my first ever meeting of the Cemetery Association and it was a really interesting meeting. I learned a lot, so thank you so much for having me. It was a good meeting about the budget and about, you know, how to maintain the cemetery. So I think there's a good common ground there. I've been working with Bill and Deb Dodge on the new wording for the budget amendment for the charter, so I think we'll be able to.
Yeah, yeah. For the charter, I was thinking, the HESCO elections charter, you're right.
Yeah, yeah. So it's a charter that, that needs to be modified and I think we'll be able to share up with the budget committee, with the select board, sorry.
Soon?
I'm done with the budget committee and.
No, you're not.
No, I'm not.
Different role.
A different role, exactly. That's it, there are two, two updates.
Cool. The only thing I just mentioned, I mean, group one, North is back on MDOT's radar again.
Oh.
For the 50th time. But, but careful, it, what it says is subject to federal approval of funds and I suspect that means it was tied to the BBB program. So not hold on our breath, but it is raising some people's ires here because this project's been on, been off, been on, been off. I think it's in the 2023.
Work plan.
And that's, that's, that's about it. So with that, I would have a kind of motion to leave the select board meeting and adjourn, I'm sorry.
Reconvene.
Reconvene as an executive session under MRSA 405, parent six, parent A, Personnel Matters.
So motioned.
Second.
Motion made and second, any comments, discussion? All in favor? Four zero. Thank you, Bruce.